Back of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The audience may be seated.
Thank you very much, Josh. Item 3A is a presentation. This presentation will be from Caitlin Whitelot from Jordan School District. Please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We're so grateful that you gave us some time on your agenda tonight that we could come and share with you a little about what's going on in Jordan District. As you may be aware, that people keep having children and moving into our district, which is causing some growth, which means that we need to address that growth. And so, we had Davis Demographics do a study using information that they got from our cities, so thank you. And that gave us some projections. As of December 31st of this year, our enrollment was 52,458. It's projected to be 56,634 in 2021. That's an 11.8% increase. More significantly, in the high school level, it's projected to see a 20.03% increase. That's a lot of students. We already have three of the largest high schools in the state. The largest being, in our city, Cocker Hills. The second largest is Harriman. And four of our high schools are considered in the top 10. Three of our middle schools are in the top 10, five of them in the top 25. We do have one middle school that is in the lowest percentile, and that school is also in our district, and that is Joel P. So, tonight, we want to share with you our five-year building plan. Yeah, and Jen, I forgot to introduce the other members of our board. This is Jen Atwood, Richard Osborne, and Janice Warheath, and our business manager, John Larson, who can answer questions about numbers a little better than myself. So, as she's passing that out, you'll note that the first two elementary schools on our plan are being paid out of capital reserve, and they are slated to go into South Jordan in Daybreak and in Harriman, where we have a lot of growth. Harriman is the fastest-growing area in our district. The following schools are also on our five-year plan and projected to be needed in the years that you will see. Now, as you look down, there is only one school in West Jordan in our five-year plan. Does that mean we don't have any other schools slated for West Jordan ever? No, it means that in the next five years, these are the schools that are projected to be needed based off of Davis demographic numbers. So, the school that you see, it says middle school in West Jordan. And you could flip that and say West Jordan Middle School, because that one is actually a rebuild, and in the fine print, it tells you that one of them is a rebuilt middle school, and that is West Jordan Middle School. So, tonight, the reason for our visit is to share with you the need, and so you've got that in front of you, and there are dollar figures. I would like to share with you that after the last bond went down in a blaze of not-so-much glory, the board went to work and did a lot of different things. That is why you can see that two schools will be paid out of capital reserve. We sharpened our pencil and looked closely at our finances and found some money that we feel comfortable using to build two new schools. After that, we also had some committee work done with not only board members, but mayors and experts in their fields come in and help us look at our buildings, what type of buildings we're building. We also had citizen review committees, along with employees, come and say what kind of buildings they feel we should be building. And interestingly, in the elementary in the middle, they chose, after touring schools in several different surrounding districts, they chose a couple of our own models. And so, the elementaries that will be built will be fashioned after Fox Hollow. And the middle school that they preferred was Sunset Ridge, so two schools that are existing in our city. The good news is that our last elementary school was built in Harriman for a little over 18 million. And we did our bids last night for these two middle elementary schools, and they came in at about, they'll be about 14, 14, 14, 5 when they're done. So, we did what the community asked and looked at how we could save money. So, all of these costs, the beginning cost reflects the percentage that we were asked to take our buildings down by, and then the upper cost reflects what inflation will do as time goes on. So, one of the things that we want to ascertain from you is, when we're looking at this bond, should we look at how much it will cost our citizens per year? Or should we concentrate on the overall amount of the bond? And we really want input. And if this isn't the place to get your input, then I really want to have you contact us. All of our contact information is found under our website, under board members. It's pretty easy to get. But we really do want input on what you, as a city, and what you as individuals think. We really appreciate the opportunity to come. Do you have any questions?
I just have one question. Typically during presentations, we don't have them, but the 300-plus million that's in the state legislature that's above projected, they stated that most of that's going to education. I just wondered if you knew how much is going to the largest, fastest-growing school district in the state?
That is a really good question, and I think it was the governor that said he would like it to all go to education. Unfortunately, in our form of government, he doesn't really make that choice. The senators and representatives do to begin with, and, you know, he can veto what they've sent to him, but... So, until this session is over, we won't have an answer.
Yeah, I just, I heard the President of the Senate state that same thing, and the Speaker of the House both say that.
Did they say that they wanted to send money to education? That would be great.
We don't know until the end of the session, but I just wanted to throw that out. Any other questions? Thank you very much. We'll be contacting you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 3B, a presentation from Beau Hunter regarding the proposed bridges constructed by UDOT.
Thank you. I know you guys are busy. We won't take a lot of time. On the screen, just want to give you a quick overview. UDOT's moving in a direction to convert Bangator Highway into more of an expressway or a freeway. They've started already. You may have seen it, 78 South. Interchange was built in your community. Also, Redwood Road was constructed and finished last year. We're studying four locations right now, two of them inside of West Jordan, so 54 South and 114th South aren't, but 70th and 90th are. We're working towards some planning and designs that would convert those intersections into grade-separated interchanges, similar to what currently exists at 78 South. Our schedule right now, we're in the environmental phase. We started in December. Our public launch started earlier this month in January, and we anticipate wrapping up April, May with environmental study. UDOT right now is securing program manager, they would call it. It's an alternative delivery method for design-build, and we're hoping construction on all four of these could start next spring. We don't know exactly what that'll look like until a contractor comes on board, which will be about a year from now, but we're working towards construction in 2017. You can see for 70th South, and you can go online, I left cards at each of your stations up there, and I gave Melanie an extra stack. You're welcome to go online and look at these maps in more detail, but we're really concentrated at the location, at the intersection in the study area. One of the things at 70th South is we have the pedestrian bridge. We're working with West Jordan City, the school district that just presented, to come up with solutions for that. Jordan Valley Aqueduct runs adjacent to the road, and we're working with Jordan Valley to determine what solutions exist there. And there's utility and eventually potential property acquisitions, and we should know more design-wise in about six to eight weeks on what our design looks like and what the footprint will be at each of those locations. The study area for 90th South is about the same size. A couple of things that vary, we have Bingham Creek, we have the old Bingham Highway and the railroad crossing, so it dives underneath. Bingham drops and goes under both those structures, and then if we were to go over, like at 78th, we'd have to climb again. So, we're working through, does over-under of Bangator work? Do you look at over-under of 90th? Again, in six to eight weeks, we should have more of those details, and we'd like to come back and talk through those with you. There is also some overhead power lines at this location. City coordination, we've been working with the city. We had an initial meeting with the staff on the 9th of December, kind of a kickoff meeting to get intake from them on what to look at, what to study, what to consider. They're also attending, we have a bi-weekly team meeting that they have been attending pretty regularly. We're here tonight to present. We hope to come back regularly and present, and didn't want to take a lot of time, but just kind of wanted to get that in front of you. We've been doing public outreach, starting earlier this month. We sent nearly 2,000 mailers to your residents and businesses adjacent to both of these locations, and we're working with Kim Wells to get information out through existing channels that you have. Just wondering if you might have any questions about the study or what we're trying to accomplish?
Councilmember Rice.
Got a question for you. I heard a rumor that I-215 is going to be getting some work done as well. I'm hoping it's not at the same time.
That is true. I-15 between 47 South, oh, sorry, I-215 between 47 South and SR 201, the 21st South Freeway, will be reconstructed. They'll pull out the old concrete, put new back. There's some other improvements there as well. It will start this summer, and so there is a chance it will overlap for about a year. There has been a commitment made that 47 South, those improvements will be done in the first year, and the configuration on that won't change. I mean, they'll switch traffic each year to build the freeway, but once they switch it, it will stay in place for that construction season. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but yes, for about a year, there will be some overlap where both could be under construction. We don't know if all four of these will be built at one time, or if a contractor will stagger those. We'll know more in January when a contractor's been selected.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember McCall.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate this. That comment rolled me right into my next thought, although it's off-topic from what you're trying to present on, it brings up Mountain View Corridor. Could you just give a real quick 15-second, or even a 30-second update, if you have it, on Mountain View Corridor and the possibility of legislative funding northward from where it ends today at, I think it's 54th?
I'm probably not the right person. I didn't introduce, I have John Montoya, UDOT project manager, and Brian Atkinson, our design manager. Do you know anything about Mountain View? I don't know anything to...
Yeah, I'm sorry, very little. We could certainly get that in the comments during our meeting, and we'll be updated on whether or not...
Or...
Either that, or just a short letter would be great, just so we have an idea, because like, to me, that would be our relief for going through this.
Right. I can track it down and either send it back through Dave Murphy or Kim Wells. Will that work?
Yes, and I have some information on that tonight in my report, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sure, you're good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
For the update, appreciate it. Communications, city manager?
I've been giving you bills now that the legislative session is in full swing, and some of them have a timely basis, so as soon as I get them and I see a problem one way or the other, I'll be giving you copies of them, in my opinion, as well as that of our consultants. So, you'll see in the next 45 days quite a bit of this. Thank you.
Gary?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
David Oka?
Nothing tonight.
Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items tonight. Consent, you'll notice we have a couple things for approval. One is replacing all the chain link fencing around the ball dimes at Veterans Memorial Park, and the other is the last round of playgrounds that was completed with the park project list. If those are approved tonight, we'll be moving forward with them as soon as approval is done. That's all. Thanks.
Thanks. Dave Sobel?
Yeah, just a quick update on the storm drain bond. We formally closed that yesterday morning, so everything's done there.
Dave Murphy?
Okay. Thanks, Mayor and council. Just wanted to give you an update of UDOT projects that will have an effect on West Jordan travel. This was just recently given to me, and it actually was coming from a presentation that was done at the Transportation Commission meeting last Friday here in our council chambers. Mountain View Corridor, 54th South to 41st South is underway. That's an $180 million project that brings that corridor north. Right after that, they're going after the 41st South to 21st South expressway build, and at that point, they'll drop back and start doing bridges on the rest of the corridor. So, that's, this is the next five-year window look, so that's what's coming down the pipe there. I-215, you've just heard about, that's 47 South to 201, 104 million slated for that. Right now, SR 154, so Bangator Highway at 6th West, this is over by IKEA, and they're going to go grade-separated there on Bangator Highway, so that, that's another bridge, brings total up to three on the toll quarter. That's happening now. The interchanges you just heard about, the total price tag there is 208 million for the four interchanges that were just discussed, and I have the breakdown for each individual interchange, if you want to know the budget. Redwood Road, 126 South to Bangator Highway, they're going to go ahead and widen that through Riverton, which means a row of homes is going to be taken down in Riverton, unfortunately, but that's 37.2 million. 104 South improvements, Redwood Road to I-15, $15 million. They're looking at taking out the planters in the middle and doing small widening to add more lane capacity in that section of 104 South and South Jordan. And it does affect us, because coming up next, there's pavement management projects, there's one on 90th from Bangator to 48, that's the miller overlay section. That's that plant mix steel coat that's coming off. They're going to take it off and overlay that this year. There's going to be a big build on I-15 and some interchange work done at 175 million from I-15, 123rd South to 201, specifically 25 million to work on the railroad bridges at 7200 South and widen those sections coming off the freeway, which is a lot of big work, even though more than what they've done there today. And last of all on the list, this is in funding year 2021 and 2022, SR 209, that's 90th South, Redwood to I-15, 34 million. Total package of projects here is 3/4 of a billion dollars, and that's it for my reports, Matt.
Dave, just one question. The part that's funded from 45th to 201 on Mountain View has already been funded, right?
Yes.
So, it's absolutely in the, okay, in the queue. Thank you.
Chief Sharman?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief McElroy did not have anything to bring to you tonight.
Chief Dennis?
Nothing at this time, thanks.
Councilmember Rice?
Thank you. I would like to thank our city manager, Mark Page, for his updates on the legislative sessions as it's gotten started. It's very helpful, and I appreciate it from that side. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to express my appreciation and thanks to city staff for the welcome and the introduction to our city operations and the way things work. Since my election and subsequent, until now, I've had the opportunity to tour the fire department, all four fire stations, the police station, the Public Works Building, and a couple other things, City Hall, a couple other places, and the amount of information and things that our city does is just astounding to me. Yeah, it's just unreal, so I'm giving a whole new view. I thought I was ready for this job, and now I'm thinking it's going to be another day or two, but here I am. That's all, thanks.
Councilmember McCall?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing, just an administrative thing I'd like to do at the end of the meeting, don't need to take the time now, if that's okay. And then, secondly, Dave Murphy, if he could pass along the Public Works. I had the oddest compliment today, and it was a resident of South Jordan who took time to call me and inform us of how wonderful our snow removal program is this year. And so, I wanted to pass that along specifically. They said notably, leaving South Jordan to West Jordan, the roads were different, and leaving West Jordan into Taylorsville, they noticeably got worse, and so I just wanted to pass that along. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Hagan?
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I wanted to bring the attention to the council and then really actually anybody in staff or in our audience. The Western Growth Coalition, which is a coalition that was formed back when Mountain View Corridor was proposed, which includes basically all the legislators on the west side, along with good mayors and council members, will be meeting every Saturday morning at 8:00, and we're going to alternate to different locations. This Saturday will be the 28th, and it will be at Riverton Hospital, and then the following Saturday, it will be at Jordan Valley Medical Center. And it's an opportunity to hear from our representatives on the bills that they are proposing on us as residents and businesses and the city government, so just be aware of it, and the council, you're all invited, and they feed us practice. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I told you I was going to hold a town hall meeting, and I did, and it was attended by 11 people, not counting myself. That was great. I got to listen to 11 people who were in our district, share what they think that our needs are. And I'm going to hold another one. We decided that meeting, I would hold these quarterly. So, my next meeting will be April 13th, and again, it'll be at 7:00 PM. April 13th is a Wednesday. It's a Wednesday, but it's not a city council meeting, at 7:00 PM, so those of you who would like to attend, you're certainly welcome to. Today, I spent the day at Capitol Hill. It was Local Officials' Day at the Legislature, and I got to share my time with lots of legislators and see what's going on and be with them, and it was great. There's lots of things that are going to be happening up there that will affect us, so pay attention, as we will too. If you see something we don't, please let us know, because what they do affects all of our lives. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember McCone?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to share my personal thanks and also the thanks of those whom I represent to both our city manager and our public safety for the actions that were taken to help out with our friends in UPD, with the funeral arrangements for Officer Barney. Thank you very, very much for the love and support I shared with them, and I received a number of comments about how grateful people were to see West Jordan stepping up to help cover areas of West Valley. Every night, we pray nothing happens to our officers, but when things do go wrong, it's really comforting to the residents to see the community rally together to support in any way that they can. Just want to say thank you for allowing manpower to do that, allowing our officers who could attend services, and all the other staff that helped give their own time to help show our support. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one thing. Melanie, if you, I just have to run one thing past the council. One of the many committees I serve on is to discuss the Butterfield Canyon project, highway connecting Twilla City to the Salt Lake Valley, and this is a very preliminary proposed alignment. I wanted to make sure that the council is aware that this is being proposed. There has been $200,000 put in from the state to do the pre-planning, and they're actually asking for each mayor to, and council, to have engineering staff at the next meeting so that they can get down to professional talk about the road, not just political talk. And if there's no opposition, I, that's what I would like to continue. Currently, I think the last time I-80 was shut down, it was shut down for eight and a half hours, and so it was a really long trek down to the south and come back around. Participating is Twilla County, Twilla City, Grantsville City, all of the communities to the south in Utah County, and all of the west side communities for participating in this, so, as well as UDOT and Ossett Shunt Regional Council. Councilmember McCone?
Thank you, Mayor. No opposition, rather, I just wanted to voice my support for that. That would be completion of this. I know there have been, there's been talk of this, it's floated around for a few years, but that would be huge for the west side of the valley, especially the southwest side. When we've been talking earlier today about Mountain View Corridor and the connection to 201, having the ability to connect to our neighboring valley would be significant for economic development. It'll be significant for jobs, it'll be significant for retail. So many of the other things that we've already put into play last year with the legislature, with the car dealership changes, I would happily volunteer support for our engineering folks to be part of that conversation, and I think it couldn't happen fast enough.
Just one more brief comment. They are looking at using Barney Canyon as an alternate side. The reason this is the preferred side is because the road exists paved most of the way except for four miles, but they're talking about coming off the 78th and up Barney's and dropping into Twilla Valley that way as well, because it is less steep that way. So, we'll get the engineers involved. No one has opposition to, yes, Councilmember McCall?
Thank you, Mayor. No opposition, rather, a voice of support. I'm a frequenter of those canyons, and I welcome that. I'm always up middle in Butterfield Canyons on, you know, both sides. But one comment to throw out there, at least part of the discussion, would be, should I, I mean, I know they're looking at this as an alternate to I-80, should something devastating happen on I-80, and understand that, my concern would be using an alternate route like this that back as highway now becomes I-80. I'd be really concerned about that. Just, I want to make sure we really have a firm understanding what alternate routes would be, where that traffic would go. I'd be really concerned about having freeway-type traffic coming through West Jordan, so just a concern is all.
Okay. Thank you. We will move now to citizens' comments. There's quite a number of citizens that have signed up to speak. If you're here to speak on a public hearing item, that will be a later point in our agenda. If you're here to speak on any other item, now would be the time. We will go first with those that have signed up. Kathy Hilton. As a reminder, she's coming. We need your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name's Kathy Hilton. I live in 8947 South, 2070 West in West Jordan, and mayor, council, staff, city manager. I'm here tonight because I've had quite a few citizens call and talk to me about some things that they perceive as maybe an issue with the baseball park and the concession stand, because they have been told that it was going to be demolished and that they would have to make do with what they could do this year with a pad and maybe some tables and a tent or whatever they could muster. And I'm here to say and ask that maybe we get together, because I'm not telling you that you can't do what you need to do for the city, but what I'm here to do is to see if we can't sit down and talk, because if the building is unsafe and should be taken down, then that's what the city needs to do. But we need to come up with some things that we can do so they can make it through their baseball season this year and have what they need to be able to run their league. If you haven't been involved in the league, which I was involved, and I remember standing here 35 years ago before the council, talking about the baseball park and the needs, and actually going out and getting the money to build one on the other side of the park and actually going out and getting the money to build one on the other side of the park, which is now gone. But we did raise that, and we got it done, but you can't do that nowadays. You have to meet so many specifications and, and building code. But what I'm asking is that it's just not this or that, that you can get together, you can talk with them and find out what their specific needs are, so they can run the baseball league, because their snack bar gives them ninety percent of their revenue to run their baseball league. If that's gone, they don't have a league anymore. And if that league is gone, then the league up at Ron Woods would need to have absorbed four or five hundred more kids, which they can't really do, even with running the lights. That's just not a feasible solution. So, I'm asking if you just build a shelf, it doesn't have to be a two-story, it can be just a one-story building that has counters, shelves, a sink, and a place they can put a fridge, and if you build the outside, I am sure, without a doubt, that they will fill the inside. And if there's a place to hook onto that with storage, then they would be able to get by this year and many years to come. So, that's what I'm asking here tonight. Not that you not take it down, but that you can sit down together as groups and talk about solutions to this problem that we can get done before April. And I would be happy to be part of that conversation and sit down and kind of mediate it with the leagues, because I've been through this two or three different times. In fact, I've also done it at the school level. So, thank you.
Thank you. We cannot have any applause, no booing. Uh, I'll clean the thing if we have. We'll have our sergeant in arms have you all leave. No booing, no clapping, please. It stays right in our rules when you sign up. Donovan R- Rong?
My name's Donovan Rong. I live at thirty-four fifty-four West, eighty-seventy South in West Jordan. Um, I'm also here to speak about the baseball field and the league. And when, when I first heard about this, I started thinking about, when did we decide that short-term profitability is more important than the investment that we're making in our children's future? And with the amount of things that my sons have learned at baseball that they wouldn't have learned anywhere else, they've gotten out, they've, they've learned teamwork, they learned discipline, and not to mention all the volunteers that give their, their blood, their sweat, and their hard work to develop them into better men and women as they grow up. And I feel like my job as a parent is to raise my kid to be the best person that they can be, to be a good contributing member of society. And through baseball, they have come in contact with so many people that even to this day, my son talks to his coach from when he was six years old, and that they've, they've imparted things on him that, that I haven't been able to, just because of our different life expe- you know, experiences and different life lessons. And I think that it would be a shame to take that, the league away from him, and sure, there's a possibility that, that some kids might be able to go and, and play other places, but like Ms. Hilton said, that it's not feasible for all of them. So, what are the kids that get left out gonna do? And how do you decide what kids are gonna get left out? And I think that it, it might be inconvenient. I understand that we don't have money for every project that, you know, that people wanna do, but if, if you go out and you look at the families and just a few minutes that a family can get away and not have to worry about a house payment, not have to worry about, you know, finding a job or whatever other problems they have, they can enjoy baseball. And, you know, I just have, please, don't take that away, or at least give us a way to try to help to fix it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Um, just a few facts before, we've got quite a number signed up, and I want everyone to speak that would like to speak tonight. A few facts. Um, no one planned to tear down the concession stand. We have money budgeted to remodel the concession stand. Facts are, it wasn't built with any stabilization in it. I was out there with staff today. I didn't believe it myself. It should've been torn down years ago. It's dangerous, and somebody's gonna get hurt, and we don't have enough time to, we're, we're gonna approve tonight over a hundred thousand dollars in fences to be fixed there. No one is turning their back on the children. We have a short-term problem. It's gonna be hard enough to get it torn down, get the environmental study done, get it torn down, so you can even have a season, let alone trying to build a new building this year, or do anything else. So, temporarily, we gotta solve the problem, and, uh, this council will, uh, get that done temporarily. I still wanna hear everyone speak that would like to speak, and everyone that's signed up, but those are the facts. Is there anything else, uh, Brian, that I didn't state that are facts?
No, you covered pretty much everything we, like that today.
Travis Rollie.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, um, I appreciate you clarifying a few things. So, for the last couple of days, through emails and phone calls that I've received, we were told that many of the reason that these people are here tonight is that the concession stand is being torn down, that it is not being rebuilt, and that what was gonna be provided to us is a cement pad with RV hookups. There was no mention to us any further than that, that discussions would take place whether they were going to rebuild it or not in future years. I think what's disconcerting to us, that clear back even to the years two thousand and six, when you were a councilman, that the discussion was in place for that snack shack to be taken care of, renovated back then. Ten years later, we're still here in the same concession stand with the same issues. And me and other staff members have been in close contact with Brian, and we've worked closely with him, and we appreciate everything that he said, that he is and isn't doing, and that's, you know, great jubilation to us, when we heard we're getting new fences, possibly new dirt, um, you know, and the snack shack is gonna be renovated. The last I heard on the official email that I got said the snack shack was coming down. So, as mentioned, the problem with taking that down, and it's a short-term problem that we can get through with the season using either a concession trailer, or if we're allowed to put a, you know, like a, a tough shed or something down there, we can deal with that for a season. We've looked into initial costs. Our cost, just so you understand, our league, we make about forty-five thousand dollars a year in registration fees. Those registration fees cover our uniforms, our league insurance, our rentals for the fields. It also covers any, uh, league registration dues and anything else. And so, at the end, we have very little money left over. The concession stand on a daily basis is what pays our umpires every day. Our daily operating cost, just to pay our umpires and our field setup, is anywhere between two and five hundred dollars, depending on what games we have going. By adding on a concession trailer, it adds about eighty-five dollars a day to a hundred and fifty dollars a day operating costs, which is almost twenty-five hundred dollars a month. With those kind of costs, at the end of this season, we would be done. We can't afford to accrue those costs anymore. And so, that is our concern, that if that concession stand is not rebuilt, this league will fold. We couldn't possibly operate. And the only other leagues that you have to choose from to come in would be your super leagues, and the normal blue-collar person that lives in this valley, whose kids play at those fields, cannot afford to pay the six to three thousand dollars for them to play a super league. That is the issues that we're facing. You know, I've been associated with this league for a long time, and all four of my kids have hit their first balls at that park. So, and just finish up. That is why all these people are here, because they're passionate about that field, and we have to have that concession stand to operate. There is no other options. So, that's hopefully, you know, you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alexandra Eframo.
Mayor and council, may we please, may, I'm going to read a, a meditation. Ladies and gentlemen, may we pause for a moment to reflect from our common goals before we begin the business of this meeting. We are privileged to gather here together in a system that gives us freedom to participate in our own governments. Whether from within or through the strength provided by our personal faiths, we seek wisdom, understanding, fairness, and resolve in the fulfillment of our duties and in the pursuance of our goals. May our differences be respected and our common aspiration of promoting the public good be our guide in carrying out the tasks we're about to understand. Thank you. Okay, uh, again, one of the council members, April twenty-ninth of two thousand and fifteen, behaved very badly, throwing a pin, calling names, not waiting to be called on. I'm still waiting for an apology. Parents, when you have children and they do wrong things, you reprimand them, and then they come back and say, "I'm sorry." So, I'm still waiting for this particular council member to please say, "I'm sorry," to the mayor, to the council, to the people of West Jordan. Anyway, I am asking for more transparency. I didn't know anything about this baseball park, but I just don't understand why you're, you're saying that you are gonna build, uh, I mean, it is in the process of building another concession stand, but why that wasn't related, I don't understand. But also, uh, the storm drain bond, that's seven million dollars, and I heard that that's already in place, but we have a fifty-four million dollar account, we have another account that's thirty million, we have a savings account. I still want somebody to explain all these accounts that we have. And in the treasury, that's point like, uh, one perc- or you need point something, uh, percent interest. What I'm asking, yes, we, I am a proponent of fixing the storm drains, but for heaven's sakes, we should be our own bank. Right now, I understand that the, that the interest on that seven million bond, bond is one point seven five percent. Why don't we borrow that money from us? We get to, I'm not saying that the people of West Jordan aren't supposed to pay for the storm drains, but I'm asking us not to go that high of an interest bond. Take, take that money and get it, let us be the bank. Let us gain the percentage. Let's tighten up our belts, folks. I don't understand it, but I am asking for more transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Jones.
Uh, Steve Jones, thirty-two thirty-four West, sixty-nine twenty South here in West Jordan. Um, just a couple of quick comments. Um, after hearing the presentation from UDOT, I think it's pretty poor that they're gonna try to do two overpasses on, on two of three streets that we have that go east-west. Um, as a council, I think it would be very prudent for the citizens of West Jordan if you guys, i- i- it may be fruitless, um, you know, UDOT has a head, has a tendency to do what they wanna do, but, um, I think it's a very foolish thing for them to try to do seventieth South and ninetieth South at the same time. That's, we all remember what happened when seventy-eighth got done, and it's gonna be a bottleneck. It's gonna be a mess. It won't even be, it'll be beyond, um, realization. Another comment I'd like to meet, uh, make has to do with, uh, uh, item HC. When this was approved, um, by council, I very much of a proponent for, um, making us as citizens pay for something specific and having it in a specific bucket. Um, but I have had conversation with my neighbors and members that have, have been here, and I gotta admit, I am, and I had a meeting with the mayor, and I am starting to vacillate more towards what the mayor would like to do. The reason for that is, um, we all in these times, um, are, the times are still tight. I don't believe what we're being told as far as things being good. Um, I think it's important that we limit our tax increases as much as we can, and after meeting with some of my neighbors and, and understanding their, their concern about this, for me, I look at it and go, a dollar ninety is nothing more than a, you know, go, don't go to McDonald's today and, and don't have a, uh, you know, pack of smokes, or, or, or don't go get a Coke at the local grocery store. That covers it. So, I don't look at the dollar ninety as being a burden, but I do think that in, in all financial fiscal responsibility, we have money in a bucket. We also have funds coming in that will more than adequately take care of, of our parks. And also, um, we have, um, basically, as I understand it, a plan in place to make sure that that's just not an open-ended bucket that every year is just gonna automatically increase. So, um, with that, unless I have any other information, I would, uh, I would support a discussion and possible action to rethink our utility sustainability fee and be able to fund our parks and recreations right now with what we have extra. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah Bell?
Is it Lex?
Sorry. Looks like you made it a A, but I apologize. Lex?
I don't have enough power to be, Leah. Uh, Mayor and members of the council, I, I'm not gonna have as many facts as some people that will follow, but, uh, first, I wanted to say, as, as Doug Barney's best friend and one that planned that funeral, uh, thank you, uh, to West Jordan City and Councilman Conne, that was, uh, we, we very much appreciated the help. Uh, my address is eighty-one oh two South Ponz Lodge Drive, which backs up to fifty-six hundred West, and there's a proposal, business item eight Bravo, that is a proposal to change the MFR to HFR at that location. There are multiple phases of this plan, but the first phase would be directly behind my house. Uh, I've seen plans from the builders, I've seen, uh, engineer plans that, that say that the three-level housing that they propose to put right behind my house, um, is not going to look into my backyard, not gonna obstruct view, and qualifies it, again, as MFR rather than HFR because of some of their buy-ups, which I feel are absolutely ridiculous. But the issue I have is the three-story housing there is gonna look directly into my backyard. It's gonna look right into the windows in my backyard. The buy-ups that they have received in that area are for a swimming pool and a lazy river that could support maybe fifty to a hundred people, where they are proposing five hundred and fifty units, times three or four residents per, there are two thousand people living in that place. Uh, another thing, especially up my, um, in my expertise is the traffic study used was two thousand thirteen, early, two thousand thirteen predates Ascent Academy, predates the Smiths, predates fifty-six hundred, opening from seven thousand South to seventy-eight hundred South, which created a great deal more traffic in that area. And now, we're going to put a two-thousand resident apartment complex right there, next to single housing residence and HFR right across the road from established housing area. It, to me, is, is, I think ludicrous, we have to look at the benefit verse, versus, um, the payment for that. That's an incompatible usage, if, if you were to ask me. Uh, that two thousand people is gonna require another police officer, at least, if we stay with the national average of one per two thousand, that's another cost that will incur. Some of the things that I, that I was thinking of is, is other, other than that, is the reputation, the crime that that brings. Unfortunately, I've had a lot of experience with that, high-density traffic. High-density traffic, or high-density housing attracts lower-income individuals, which unfortunately, and it's just a national fact, raises crime rates. And that concerns me as a father and somebody that's going to live right next door to this place. So I just asked, we consider maybe moving this project back. I know it's been delayed for years and I'm sure all of you have had enough of talking about it, but look at another traffic study that is current and considers the Smiths. Thanks.
Thank you. Kim Smith?
Hi, I live at 1891 West 7,000 South. My boys go to West Jordan Pony to play because of a couple of core fundamental values that they've learned there. It's an organization run all by volunteers. Last year, I spent over 300 hours volunteering for my boys to have the experience at that park. I even coached a team. Before last year, I probably didn't know the first thing about baseball. I had to learn from YouTube videos and everything along the way, but that's how important and dedicated I am to making sure that my boys have a great league that doesn't profit from any of the funds that they generate, and that's why the snack bar is so important. And I know it's already been said, but in the February 2006 city council meeting, Council Member Kelly Meyer stated, "The concession stand currently being used is too small and inadequate for the growing needs of those who attend the games. There is also a definite safety issue. If an inspector deems the building a hazard and shuts it down, please think of the negative impact this would have on the league to remain self-supporting. A large percentage of their funding comes from the snack bar sales." And then he continued, "The concession stand may have to wait until the fiscal year of '06, '07. Ten years, the city has known about the hazards of the snack shop. This isn't a new issue. This is neglect on behalf of the city. There are ways to run the funds. I have been home from work all day today, and I have called many local businesses and reached out to many different people. In fact, I have a Las Vegas co-ed competitive softball team already offered to come up here and play a competitive fundraiser tournament to help us raise the funds, because they used to live here in West Jordan and they played on that field when they were young. We could also speak with Interstate Brick, who I have contacted. They also donated all of the brick for West Jordan High School snack bar stock shop, an electrician, a plumber, builder, kitchen supply retailer, et cetera. We could reduce the costs substantially to fund this project mainly off of donations. In the meantime, like has been said, we do need permission to build a temporary structure. The league needs those funds to operate. As a single parent, I am already paying nearly $500 for my children to play baseball. My kids will never play in an accelerated league because I cannot afford it. If fees that West Jordan Pony charged had to go up to pay for umpires, the city fees, et cetera, I could not afford my children to play. Thank you."
Thank you.
Mayor, city council staff, thank you. I live at 8017 South Big Springs Drive, and I'm here about business item 8B. I sent you all an email today, and I just wanted to draw from that and remind you of some reasons why this projected apartment complex is not a good idea for our city. When I look over the pictures that were first proposed, that our MFR, HFR site would look something akin to this, and the plan I see now looks absolutely nothing like this. This looks attractive and beautiful, and it has an open outdoor feel, and when I look at the complex now, it's crowded, high, it's densely populated. I drive my children to and from Fox Hollow every day, and the traffic, especially in the morning coming out of Fox Hollow, on, turning onto 5600 West is really bad. I would like to see another traffic study done, since the last one was several years ago, and the traffic has changed quite a bit in that area. More and more, it feels like my neighborhood is being boxed in on three sides by medium and more high-density housing, and when we moved in six years ago, it was open, and I know things change over the years, but I did not envision it becoming like what it's supposed to be with these apartments. After looking over the general plan for the West Jordan area that was put together in 2012, I do see some points that could be violated if we go forward with this plan of the apartments. Chapter three of the general plan under land use, goal two, policy one, number six, says, "Continue to administer and refine development standards requiring buffers between incompatible uses. Buffers may include a combination of landscaping and open space." And, you know, I have neighbors who do back up right to that, and it does seem to be a perfect example of incompatible use to have this low-density housing and then immediately these three-story tall apartment buildings right on the backside. Goal four, policy two, single-family housing should be the primary residential development type in the city. Future land design, excuse me, future land use designations. Each of the land use classifications is further divided into land use designations. Low-density residential is the largest land use type planned within the city at 31.97, followed by medium-density residential at 16.47. And in 2010, I saw that we were at 4.14 high-density residential, and I wonder how that will change after these apartments would be built. In addition to wildlife's dependence on our washes, I know it's in the plan to pipe a wash, and I understand that that could be a real detriment to the area if there's one major storm. Something can clog the system and cause a real flood. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Shelley Turnbo, and I live at 8032 Island Creek Drive. I'm here on, about the apartments on the View on 5600. Last month, I attended the planning commission meeting, and I listened to the commission and how they awarded the point values for the density buy-ups for this project. I'm actually glad that I had the opportunity to attend that, because before then, just looking at the council minutes, I did not understand how the buy-up points worked. By that meeting, it seems to me that the builder was very good at maximizing the points by somewhat manipulating the system. I believe that many of the amenities that the points were awarded for, the builder would include in his project anyway to make it a fantastic project. I also feel that by using different labels for the same types of areas is a way to manipulate the point system. For example, a courtyard, open area, and common green are all just really spaces with grass. Another example would be a playground and a totlot. These are both areas for children to play in with playground equipment. One of the things that I did not understand is, it seemed like the points were in the ordinances, but I do, full points need to be awarded. If it says, "If you put in a swimming pool, you get two points," does that mean you need to be awarded those two points? Because as someone previously said, that swimming pool is extremely small for 513 I do want to say that with the amenities that this buy-up is allowing, the apartments look fantastic. They look amazing. But this comes with a price. Allowing the density of this area to be increased decreases the desirability of the surrounding community. I live in that community, wow, I'm emotional. It's a great community. I know at this point, it's late in the game, and all that I can really say is that I am unhappy that the wants of the builder are put above the wants of the West Jordan residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Mayor, Councilman Burton, congratulations on your new appointment. Would it be possible, before we get started, could we bring up a graphic of item, business item 8 Bravo? It'd be a lot easier to explain the development and some concerns. I assume this is probably a laser pointer or something. Here it is. There it is. You don't have that graphic? Are you guys familiar with the layout?
It's 9B-1.
9B-1?
The PDF.
And if you could just find the overall view of it, the big exploded kind of view If you'd like, I could get started with some comments, well, it'd be fine. I don't want to dig into it, the time would be unfair.
We'll reset your time now.
That's not bad. So, the overall picture, so that's the parkour course, that's your one, okay. So this, this parkour course here is right there, and we're talking about phase one primarily. I'd like to also echo a lot of the concerns that Lex Bell brought up. The traffic study is old, and I am aware, first of all, I am aware that 5600 West is going to be a four-lane road. I'm aware that that zone is MFR and the density is possible nine units per acre. I'm not opposing its development. My concerns are just so we have a successful development. I really want everyone to succeed here. I have a lot of concerns. The traffic, one. The buy-ups, it seems we're giving the builders double and triple buy-ups. And if we could explode that view, I could totally explain it a lot more. This is part of the WSPA zone, which has certain requirements attached to it. And to kind of give an example, there's another development called Aiden Brook Village in the WSPA, another Peterson development, and we, we have given them probably half as many buy-ups for the same things. Now, if you look at Aiden Brook Village's monuments, for example, they are the exact same monument, but we gave Aiden Brook 6% buy-up, and we gave the View 10%. Completely unfair. Another issue is the landscape buffer included in the WSPA. Now, this is the West Jordan document on the Aiden Brook Village development. It says, "Discussion about the landscape buffer and some of the percentages for benches, playfield. Playfield, they gave one, we're giving the View 2%. Totally unfair. Common green space, we're giving one to Aiden Brook, two to the View. And then it says, "Landscape buffer to Aiden Brook, we gave 0%." And then in parentheses, it says, "Landscape buffer is required for city standards in the WSPA zone," which it is. So we can't give another buy-up for something that's required. And if you would, I wish you could see that example. So the pool, this pool that everyone's talking about, and the fire chief, if you could chime in, I mean, this thing is probably, the capacity is maybe 100 people, and we're looking at 1,500 people, probably conservative, to fit in this. And now, how is that going to benefit this community? It's ridiculous. In addition, if you can see this document here, this is the pool, and there's the lazy river, and there's the pool, and you'll see one hot tub. In the original design that was approved, there were two hot tubs. So it's kind of like a bait and switch, and I have so much more. There's flood plan issues, drainages, there's a 30% slope drainage on Barney Canyon, 30%. Only takes 2% of, you know, for piping in your home, 30%. There's a lot of issues here, and I hope, I hope you reconsider. Thank you for your time.
Council members and mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak against the View development, which is being considered as business item number 8B on the agenda. And I do appreciate the opportunity that I've had to meet with the developers and they, and speak regarding my concerns. I still, I oppose the development. There's three main reasons I'd like to speak about for that opposition. First, having a high-density three-story apartment placed in a medium-density zone. Second, there's not adequate buffer for where, I'm Don Moss, I live at 8108 Ponce Lodge Drive, for the homes there along the side on 5600. And third, this development's not compatible with the nearby neighborhood. High-density apartments involve more transient populations that can generally be not as vested in the community. The extent of high-density development that has occurred in our area is concerning. I oppose the placement of high-density three-story apartments in a zone designated as medium-density. The West Jordan 2012 Comprehensive General Plan, page 25, states, "Medium-density residential will include development providing for moderate intensity, single-family attached-detached units, as well as twin and townhomes." It further says on page 25, "High-density residential will include development providing for multifamily housing at or above two stories in height. The three-story buildings facing our homes does not fit the concept for a zone designated as medium-density residential." Further, there's not adequate buffer between our neighborhood on the east of 5600 South and the three-story apartments planned to face our homes. There is not an adequate transitioner buffer between the homes and the proximity of the planned three-story apartments. Goal five, on page 140 of the comprehensive plan, is, "Preserve positive neighborhood character." Policy one states, "Height and scale of new development should be compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. The three-story apartments facing our homes are not compatible and do not fit the concept of the medium-density zone they're planned to be placed. Please consider our neighborhood and community concerning this development. 5600 West is an important road. Please consider the existing homeowners concerning the development decision and consider how our city will be viewed along this important road. I hope the developer would consider other profitable uses of the land for our community. Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lenissa Bell. My address is 8102 South Ponce Lodge Drive, and I sent the mayor and members of the council an email earlier today. I've had responses from three of you, and I don't want to go into that email too much because you all have it for reference, but wanted to talk a little bit tonight about my experience. When my husband and I were newlyweds, we elected to live in an apartment complex because it was an inexpensive means of providing housing for our family. And during the time that we lived in that apartment complex, I had the glorious opportunity of being approached by a streaker. Our neighbor was arrested for domestic violence. We had multiple neighbors whose vehicles and apartments were burglarized. There were a whole slew of problems that plagued this apartment complex and many others around the valley. My husband, being in law enforcement, gets asked a lot of the time by young people and newlyweds, "What apartment should I live in?" And the answer is usually, there's not really a good one. And a lot of, a lot of the complexes that are being built... And a lot of the complexes that are being built, the new complexes are beautiful, they're exciting, they have great amenities, but as they age, they move away from that because the people who live there don't care about them. They're there temporarily, they stay for the time that they need to be in that area, they stay while the rent's convenient, and then they go. They're not contributing members of the society, usually, in the long term. There are exceptions, of course, and I would hate to make anyone feel alienated by that. That's definitely not my goal tonight. But this is the reason why we chose to move to a low-density housing area, so that we could have a home for our family, a place where we could raise our children, where we could have a little more space and a little more privacy. And this complex, as is currently proposed, threatens that. I have seen, as some of the others have discussed here tonight, the original plans for the development, and they're beautiful. It looked like a residential neighborhood. There were medium-density housing complexes. But as it stands right now, there is a three-story building that is planned to be built immediately behind our home. And I'm not opposed to the development of this complex at all. I understand the importance of development, commerce, bringing money into the city, and building places for people to stay. But I do think that it needs to be something that will work for everyone, not just the developer, but for the existing residents. There's a reason that we chose to live in West Jordan. There's a reason that we invested in our homes and in this community. And I would ask that you all take this into consideration as you're moving forward with this plan, that you remember those people who are here, who are the basis now of your community, and who want this to be a lifelong home. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all that have signed up to speak, or any citizens' comments. Anyone from the public wishing to speak now would be the time.
Good evening. I'm Gardner Crane with Uentland Company. Just wanted to address some of the concerns that were voiced. We had the opportunity to meet with Don and Lex and Eric a couple of weeks ago, and we obviously didn't win their hearts, but we appreciate the process and respect their opinions, and we appreciate the fact that we're all free to come before a governing body and express our positions. Just quickly, we wanted to point out just a couple of errors in their statements. One, Lex pointed out that we're requesting a rezone, which is not true. The property is already zoned, as you know. The site plan is approved by the Planning Commission. And we had a great discussion with the Planning Commission addressing the buy-ups. After they spent an hour reviewing all of our amenities, they came away, in our minds, pleased and awarded sufficient points to justify the density. In fact, Judy Hanson, who's on the City Council and voted to send it back to the Planning Commission, was fortunately on the Planning Commission at that time, and after reviewing the amenities in detail, actually voted for the project and voted, agreed that the amenities were more than substantial enough to justify the density. We empathize with the few citizens that are here and their concerns with regards to impact. We, like I say, we've met with them, we've planned as well as we could to plan the project to benefit the community best as a whole. We will never be able to please everyone. There are four or five homes that back on 5600 West, I just don't know how, you know, ideally for them, nothing ever happens there, but it's going to be developed. The buildings are placed per your ordinance where they need to be to screen the parking from public view. Therefore, for most of, really almost all of West Jordan's citizens, the buildings are located appropriately. 5600 West, as you drive past the project, will be nice-looking, the parking will be shielded from view. If the few neighbors that are here had their way, they would prefer to have the parking out on 5600 West with the buildings set back further, to get the buildings further away from them. That might be good for them, but we view that as a detriment to the community as a whole. We feel the project will have much more curb appeal, and we've simply complied with the city's ordinance by placing the buildings where they should be to shield the parking from public view. You're familiar with the economic benefit that a project like this is to the city. Property tax revenue, $120,000 is our estimate in a year. During the course of construction, building fee and impact revenue to the city, $5 million. Sales tax revenue, $350,000 in a year. Recurring utility service fees to the city and others, $600,000 annually. We recognize that multifamily housing has a stigma that goes with crime. This project is not like other projects. We will do criminal background checks, we'll do credit checks. And there are also, by the way, no studies that indicate that there's a collaboration, coordination of crime along with density. If you take a 500-unit residential neighborhood and a 500-unit multifamily property, statistics show the police come equally to either project. And so that's a misconception, the crime will be higher. My time is up, but we, as you know, intend for this to be the nicest multifamily project that the state of Utah has ever seen. We are, I'm very convinced that the citizens that oppose this now will be very pleasantly surprised down the road. And I've had this happen to me, where citizens that oppose our project-
You have to wrap that up, sorry.
Right. Have come to me and said, hey, some of our best friends live there now. Thank you for your time, I wish I had 10 more minutes.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm Chad Barnett, I live at 8017 Big Springs Drive. My comment's just simple, I don't think someone from the business side, from the construction side, gets to get more time as opposed to everyone else. He had about a minute more to speak, thank you.
Mayor Peterson, Peterson Development, 225 South, 200 East. Appreciate your time this evening. Just a couple of comments to clarify and give some perspective. We're partners with Uentland Development on this project. We've been developing in your city for over 25 years. We're not a fly-by-night developer, we don't just do high-density. We develop the lots where a lot of these people live, in Island Park. And I can stand before you and say I'm pleased with how it turned out, and I will be pleased with how the next development turns out because we do quality product and we stand behind what we build. The key issue tonight before you is ratifying the density that the Planning Commission has already forwarded to you. That's the key issue. You can check with Mark Pallas, your city manager, your city attorney. That's what, in my mind, it's distilled down to. Couple other brief comments. We've brought the Smiths Development to your city, we hope to bring more retailers in. Had communication with Home Depot this last few months, CVS, they all want to be there, but they need the rooftops. I've said that to you before, in a public setting like this, I've said it to you before when I've shaken your hand here at the interim between the meetings. So I'll say it again, we need rooftops out there. Traffic studies are done, they're updated, and we're current on that. The traffic studies look 40 years out, so just to address that. This site, in addition to doing single-family lots, we also bring in churches and schools to your community. We sold the land to the Charter School. That took out a whole bunch of density by doing that. This site on the medium-density piece could have had 126 homes. We're proposing 51, just on the little medium-density piece that's been brought up today. So the density could have been more dense, and we thought a charter school would be a good use there. Last point on buffering. You have to have a break somewhere, and this was probably brought into your pack at one point. It's a graphic showing a line of sight. There's 170 feet from building to building. If that's not buffering, I don't know what is. We can't please everybody, we try to buffer the best we can. This project's between a freeway, a major collector street in 82nd, 56 West, and future commercial. I can't think of where a better place to put high-density. Sympathetic to the thoughts that have been expressed, but tonight, the issue before you is ratifying the density that City Council's approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, or any citizen's comments? Please.
My name's Ron Holt, and I live in the ranches, which is built by Petersons. And it's a great home, but I beg to differ with Petersons talking about the great developments they've done. They built the townhomes, which is right there on 7800 and Grizzly Way, which is right next to where they're going to build this development. As I recall from listening to most of the people there in the townhomes, don't they have a lawsuit now that's being formalized, or maybe it's been filed concerning the constructions of those townhomes? And a number of them, they've got serious problems. And so I'd be worried also about the construction of Petersons' new development that's going in right next to these townhomes that they already have a problem with. So, anyway, I'm concerned about Petersons and what they're doing on their constructions. And, you know, I bought a few years ago in this area, and we were concerned about what was going in, and we didn't know that there was going to be what has been proposed here this evening, you know, in our backyard. So we're concerned too, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ken Prescott, 6718 South, 2795 West. So I was communicating back and forth a little bit with the city, and I got an email here that's telling me that their city is planning on spending $72,000 to fix our fences and our fields. We hear tonight, it's $100,000. I get another one telling me that the field, or that the snack shack is being tore down and will not be replaced. An RV pad will be put in its place. Two years ago, we absorbed a lot of kids from the Kerns League because unfortunately, their city did the same thing, tore their snack shack down. They folded up. Them kids had to go somewhere to play baseball. I myself played them on them fields when I was a kid. My kids are playing there. My dad's sitting here, he coached me at that time. He's coaching my nephew now. All these people that you see behind me with West Jordan Pony on them, we're a big family. And I'm telling you, people, this is heartfelt. This is just a bunch of people coming in here complaining to you guys, and the comments about construction taking too long. I've been in construction my whole life. I am now a business agent for Operating Engineers, Local 3. Mayor Kim, you know of our organization very well.
I'm a member, yes.
Yes, you are. It can be done. It can be done if you folks allow it to be done. We have also talked to Matt Gethardt, a lot of folks have heard of him. There's $90,000 going into the Ron Woods fields and 72 going into ours. We get this from some guy that has nothing to do with it. We can't even get straight answers from our own city as far as what's happening with our league. Our league is all done on a voluntary basis. People putting in a heck of a lot of hours to make sure our kids have a place to play and a place to grow. When I was a kid, my dad made a comment that stuck in my mind, and I repeat it to every team I coached today. If my kid's on the ball field, he's learning good things, and he's not out getting in trouble. So I want you guys, when you're talking about this after we're all gone tonight, to think about that. Think about what kind of changes and what you're doing for our kids and the future of West Jordan City. That's all I got for you.
Anyone else?
My name's Ryan Sim, I live at 7264 Rural Road. This year, I was nominated, appointed, and selected to be the president of the West Jordan Baseball League. And I just want to iterate, just as we leave tonight, that we don't want to seem or sound angry with the changes that are taking place. We're certainly excited and looking forward to the renovations of the park and the things that are going on. I think more so where the emotion comes from is that the fact that that snack shack does generate a lot of revenue that helps to offset our operating expenses. And the costs that we would need to incur, if only a pad is put in, where we have to rent a concessions trailer, or not even have concessions, really isn't an option, but to rent a concessions trailer and come in and remove it nightly. We still haven't gotten a straight answer whether it needs to be removed nightly or not. Those kinds of expenses and those kinds of logistics really place a burden on the league. And so there are some emotions involved, but realistically, we're thankful for the support that we have gotten. And there is support. There are some laxes, but there is a lot of support, and we're really looking forward to the renovations. The last thing I would say with regard to renovations would be, if there's some latitude on what's being spent for fences versus what could be spent for a snack shack concession facility, certainly our preference as a league. The fences are in disrepair and need some repair. I don't know that they need to be fully replaced if that expense can go towards the building of a concession facility to help maintain the viability of our league. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, thank you. My name is Dennis Hepworth. I am a principal with Uentland Company. I think my partners have basically addressed all of the details regarding any rebuttals against some of the opposition to our project. I'm here to just make a couple of comments. One is that I think, as I sit and observe the opposition, I think they're basically doing some armchair quarterbacking and doing it at the wrong time. We are, our project is governed by a set of ordinances, which is basically the development law, and we have adhered to that law. And when that particular opposition should have been presented was back when that ordinance was being created. So we've done everything according to the ordinance and feel like our project should be approved. Another comment. What's before you is simply the ratification of the density that has been approved by the Planning Commission already. And simply put, that is it. So to address some of these concerns at this point in time, I feel like they're being addressed way too late. And that's even if they were legitimate concerns. So I'm here to ask for your approval on the density that Planning Commission has already approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just before I close, the citizens' comments. Brian, didn't you say that we had a contract for $115,000 for the fields? Between the-
There's approximately $60,000 for the renovation, for the park project list, and then we had money in there for design, if it goes to that.
Plus the fences?
Plus fences are additional, yeah.
So it's over $100,000 that's been put in the budget?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that I was accurate when I said over $100,000.
Yeah, the fences, the cost of the fences is stated on the consent item, that's the bid cost that we got.
Yeah, it still has to be approved, but it's been booked. Thank you. I will close the citizens' comments. Before we move on to consent items, I would encourage the officials of the league to get with our staff and work out the best compromise we can. And myself, I'd like to be included in those discussions. We'll move to the consent calendar. I have had no one say that they want, council member Haika?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I would like all I and K. The I has to do with the fences, just so we can have some discussion on that. Thanks, Mayor.
So I am I. Motion would be in order? Mayor? Yes. Councilmember McConaughey?
I move to approve all consent items, less I and K.
And K. We have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion to the motion. CNN, let's vote.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Mayor Raul?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Haika?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote passes, seven in favor.
I would like to, if there's no opposition from the council, to discuss consent item I now.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I-
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I had an opportunity to go out to the field today with Brian, our staff, and the mayor, and I looked at the fences, first of all. I mean, they're split. They're okay. Can you hear me now? So I wanted to pull this out so that the residents are aware that we are spending some money on these fields. We believe in these fields and we want to keep these fields. Personally, I went out there and until I got inside, I was almost afraid to be in that building, to be honest with you. And, you know, talking to our staff, I learned that we have funds. And I think the mayor brought that up to do something with that. But we're, how much we can spend on that, we still don't know. Now, I'm a proponent of that. I want the expenses done, so I'm not opposed to this. I just pulled it so we can have some discussion with the council. And, you know, our staff is really, they're focused on these fields and making better. And we were out there an hour freezing, you know, studying everything else, so. Unless there's other comments, I'll make a motion to approve.
Would be in order?
I move to approve item I. Consider mine.
We have a motion by Councilmember Haga and a second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be speaking in favor of the motion, but I just wanted to add a little bit of context. In addition to the funding that's being used here to help with the fences, I wanted to pull out some numbers from our last, last year's budget book. We spend on athletic fields for operations about three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. Looking at some of the improvements slated for Veterans Memorial, which include updates to the infrastructure for water, the road access from twenty-two, some of the other things going on. We have over a million dollars slated in projects over there. So hopefully, those who are here realize that we do have a significant vested interest in making sure that we have amenities available for our youth. So I just wanted to add those numbers in with the seventy-two thousand and some change that's been proposed here. Thank you, Mayor.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roff?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Consent item K.
Because we're, it took the time talking about the fences and the, I just wanted to see which parts and that that we're working on, on this expenditure of a hundred and sixty-four thousand. Brian, if you, can you kind of give us a rundown?
So this will be for the last four parks that were completed at the bottom. We had a total of twenty-four parks that got new, that received new play equipment due to failing structure and safety issues. So this, these will be going, these four will be going to Brigaden Park, Colonial Park, Country Squire Park, and Hancock Park.
And this is coming from the bond that we took out to upgrade our parks, correct?
Correct.
Unless there's other discussion, I'm going to approve this also.
I approve, I'm going to approve consent item K. We have a motion by Councilmember Haga and a second by Councilmember Rice. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Mayor Roff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Public hearing item seven A. Receive public input and consider for approval Resolution sixteen dash one five, amending the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen salary schedule. City manager?
Mayor, every once in a while, we need to do an intercourse correction to make sure that our salaries are competitive. And the direction from this council, I think even previous councils, to be in the top percentile to make sure that we can attract the very best people. The major change in this one is I felt that the city attorney's position should actually make more than the assistant city manager position. And that's, I've seen it that way every place. And it's been my experience that that's what you need to attract someone. So that was my change. And John Gardner's here. If you need any detail on some of the smaller items.
Questions from council? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing portion of item seven A. Anyone wishing to speak on this item now would be the time. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, item seven A, and return to the council for discussion and/or motion. Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I motion if there is no comment.
That would be in order.
Move to approve Resolution sixteen dash fifteen.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember McConaughey. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Haga.
Yeah, I'm gonna oppose this motion because on the schedule, there's some positions, like a deputy assistant manager and then an assistant manager that we don't have bill. And it's, you know, it's almost two hundred thousand dollar type of jobs. And I didn't have time to chat with the city manager about it. I'm gonna probably just oppose this just for that reason. Thanks, Mayor.
Let's vote.
Mayor Roff?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
No.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
The vote passes six to one in favor.
Item seven B, the public hearing item, has been canceled. They have withdrawn from the presentation of this item. Public hearing item seven C. Receive public input and consider for approval, ordinance sixteen dash zero nine, amending the general plan land use map for fifteen point three zero acres from low-density residential to medium-density residential designation and rezone from LSFR, Low Density Single Family Residential, WSBA, to R one ten E, Single Family Residential, ten thousand square foot lot minimum, Copper Valley Estates West, located at fifty-nine fifty-one West, eighty-five oh two South, Maryland Bodden, Etl, Applicent. David Ock. Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Larry Gardner is here to address this item.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The Bodens own a piece of property at this location. It's right east of Three Forks, Phase Seven, and north of Ronwood Park, and of course, west of the Mount New Corridor and then the large Rocky Mountain Power Corridor at this time, that is that location, carries a large transmission line. The Bodens purchased it some decades ago, holding on to it. It's been farmed for many years, and now they wish to develop it. At this time, they're asking to change the land use map from low-density designation to medium-density, and that would actually surround or match the surrounding land use designations to the west and north of this site. They're also asking to rezone the property from low-density single-family residential to an R one ten with an E-size home. And LSFR zone is a West Side Planning Area Zone, which currently the city is only administering inside the Highlands Master Plan Development. And the interesting thing is that the R one ten turns out to be about the same density as the LSFR. The Planning Commission forwarded a positive recommendation. Staff has reviewed it against the ordinance and the criteria and found that it meets all of that, meets all of the criteria for approval. The one thing the Planning Commission was excited about is the E-size home on this designation on the ten thousand square foot lots. And I did speak to a home builder yesterday, as a matter of fact, and he is saying that the E-size home and the ten thousand square foot lots are adequate to provide a three-car garage, which is one of the major selling points in the city right now is three-car garages. And so I don't know whether people have three cars or they just have an extra storage unit, but that seems to be the big thing. And so anyway, staff recommends approval as well as the Planning Commission. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions from Larry? Looks like you're good. Thanks. We'll now open the public hearing for item seven C. Anyone wishing to speak on this item now would be the time. Please.
Hello, councilmembers again. I just wanted to remind all the, excuse me? Oh, sorry, Eric. I have a, a Ponsrod Drive, my short.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind all of my council members and mayor that a lot of you, if not all of you, ran your campaigns based on no more density in West Jordan. I think you all recall saying that. A lot of the meet and greets at the libraries. You looked into our faces and shook our hands and said, "I don't want any more density." And every single agenda that I've seen in the past months have had at least one item on them where density is being questioned and trying to be raised. And that's not the West Jordan that this shareholder wants to be in. It's not the one I bought in two years ago. And I hope we get out of the practice of raising density. And if we can look at some of the more premier cities in the valley, I don't think you will find the type of building practices that we're struggling with here in those cities. And if we could just take that in consideration going forward when these issues come before the body, I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
I'm Alexandra Ephraim, thirty-seven thirty-five, Dutch Circle. I too will repeat and approve the person just in front of me. I don't, you know, a couple of years ago, it is true, you know, politicians, they campaign. They campaign to the likes of what people want to hear. But once they're in office, wow, the doors open wide. The barn door opens wide. And I too agree. Let's keep the low density. You said you campaigned low density. Please, at least stand behind your word. Don't, you know, I'm just amazed how few people come to vote or do vote. Even as easy as the ballot coming to your home and how easy is it to make an X and whatever it is, but people are disillusioned with politicians. They say one thing and then they get into office and it's something else. I really pray this coming year that we will try to do what we say and not try to swing a different attitude and thing. And it is true. I mean, quite a few years ago, you said no high density, but boy, it changed in Gardner Village. It just, there it went. And it's just, I don't know. We all pay taxes. We're all citizens. We love West Jordan. But I don't know. We need a lot more transparency, especially what happened with the issues today that have combined. But the truth, you spoke the truth before election. Live the truth so that people will get encouraged to vote. You're representing all of us. But you don't need to go ahead, say one thing, and then turn around and do something else. Anyway, I'm asking all of you to please keep your word. Remember what you said. Maybe you need to get your little flyers that you handed out to everybody and just remind yourselves, what did I say there? Oh, my goodness, I did say that. Oh, I'm not doing that, you know? I think we need to review and look at, and look into the mirror and see and say, "Yeah, I want to be a proud politician. I want what I said, I'm gonna do." Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Bob Jones. I live at eighty-three twenty-seven South Maple Water Drive, which is directly north entering into this property. When we, we were the first residents to live in that neighborhood, the Ivory Homes, and we appreciated the fact that it was large lots and what we expected to have, that there weren't cars constantly going to be parked on the streets, both sides, as in some of the surrounding neighborhoods. And we bought there because that's what we wanted. That's what we expected. We were willing to pay a high price to get that. And I would like to see the property that's developed to the south, which connects and will be driving through our neighborhoods, to be the same thing that we expected to have when we bought our place. We've been there seven years now, and it's a wonderful neighborhood. And the same with the property to the west of this. They're larger lots and they're beautiful homes, and they're building them now. And there are people that are stepping up to the next phase of their life where they want and can afford a quiet neighborhood and a beautiful surrounding and neighbors that have the same desires and goals as they do. So I'd like to see it stay zoned the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
And by the way, thank you for your integrity. I believe that we have a wonderful council and mayor and system in West Jordan. I appreciate all the work that you do and love living here. I've lived here my whole life.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Steve Jones, thirty-two thirty-four West, sixty-nine twenty South. I've probably voiced this before and I'm gonna voice it again, but just listening to some of the comments have been proposed, I'm kind of under the understanding that there's not much difference in the number of units from what it is right now to what is being proposed. If that's the case, then there really is no ground to, in my book, to be changing if it's that close. I mean, if we're talking, you know, the builder only gets to build one less home or two less homes in there. I am very much a proponent of low density. The biggest fear I have right now is West Jordan is becoming West Valley City. Contrary to what another gentleman spoke earlier, when you load things up, it's not the same as, it's five hundred thousand homes spread out versus five hundred thousand homes in five acres. If I have the same number of people and I have the same number of lots, pretty soon you've got thousands of people, so your crime is going to be higher. West Jordan originally started out to be a farming community. You know, to be honest with you, I don't give a diddly darn that the city's gonna be turning in a bunch of revenue. Your job is to take care of us. That's your job. And if we're paying enough taxes for you to take care of us, the needs are being met. We have a plan. We should stick to the plan. I understand there's extenuating circumstances, and when those come, that's the forum to get changed. But like others have noticed, it seems like every time we come in here, somebody wants to bump it up, wants to go higher. And for all practical purposes, I could probably go back and look at these other lots and find out that some of them have been bumped up. And so that, to me, is just kind of a lame excuse to say, "If I bump this up and then five years from now I'm gonna come in and bump the next one, well, that one's this. Well, let's take it up a little higher." So I am, I am against changing this. Something in my book needs to be set to our city planners because I'm seeing an awful lot of these, as far as I'm concerned, just going sliding through. Maybe I need to spend some more time going to the Planning Commission meetings and finding out what exactly goes on there, but I'm struggling with some of this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Don Moss, 8108 Ponce Lodge. And I would not be consistent if I didn't raise an objection to this change of increasing the density. When I see the change to an MFR zone, I'd hope that wouldn't create the concern that I have voiced regarding an MFR zone next to my neighborhood with a three-story apartment planned in there. The opportunity here is to consider a density that's increasing the density, and I am concerned about the higher density for this nice community that we live in and the nice city that we have in West Jordan. I appreciate you have a difficult challenge weighing all interests, but thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing of 7C and return to the council for discussion and/or motion. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for informational purposes, if nothing else, what's being proposed here is not a high-density development. And what is currently on the books has been written off the books. So it has to change to something. The LSFR zone is not applicable anywhere except for in the Highlands Development. This is not part of the Highlands Development. The apartments that everybody spoke on earlier, we'll be considering later, that's part of the Highlands Development. That's where this performance-based zoning comes into play, where you have buy-ups and you have increased density if you put in nice countertops or whatever they are. That cannot apply to this parcel anymore, which is why now it's being proposed to rezone. It's gonna match the houses to the west and the houses to the north. In fact, they're gonna be nicer than the houses to the north. They'll be bigger homes. Whether that's nicer or not, I guess is in the eye of the beholder. And just as a personal note as to my integrity, I was actually on the planning commission that recommended this to the city council, having served on the planning commission for three years. And I voted for it on the planning commission, so my integrity would require me to vote for it tonight as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Hagan.
Thanks, Mayor. I have a question from staff. So is that a corridor for a power that's to the east?
It's a power transmission corridor.
Yeah, frankly, I think this is good land use for myself, so.
I had a comment, and then all of them. Looks like somebody had a motion. I just wanted to state, to me, the issues we have tonight are two completely different issues. This is a rezone, and I concur completely with what was just mentioned by Councilmember Jacob, in that we have a need to change it. Whereas the other one that will come up later is completely a setting of density for an existing zone. So two completely different issues. For me, the comment I have for this one is it makes sense. If they come back asking for R-18, I'd be saying no. But R-110, it's entirely compatible to the north and the west. I would see a reason to support it. And with that, I'll completely concur.
Councilmember Jacob?
If there's no other comments, I'm prepared to make a motion.
We have one comment.
Go ahead. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to concur with what was stated earlier by Councilmember Jacob and Nichols. Very, very different issue with the change in zoning. Currently, it's LSFR, which as Councilmember Jacob mentioned, was part of an old zoning system that actually caused a number of problems. If people added certain amenities, they'd get so many points, they could build so many additional houses. It caused for a fair amount of confusion, and I think we didn't get the results that were expected when that system was originally put into place. So that system was retired, and consequently, the zoning does need to be updated. The R-110 matches exactly the neighborhood to the north and to the west. The difference is with the E-size homes, C-size is a little bit smaller, so the homes to the north will be a little bit smaller. These will be a little bit larger homes, but they're the same-sized lots. Nothing like putting a large multi-story building right next to single-family residences. Rather, this brings everything into more of a consistent pattern and will give more consistent development with this type of zoning than with the old LSFR that has, well, no longer exists on our books. So I'll be supporting this change because I don't see this as an increase of density. LSFR is pretty close to what we have with R-110. We have a larger, a little bit larger home size here, and it brings consistency, so the neighborhood will get the product closer to what they're expecting by making this change. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, barring further discussion, I move that we improve ordinance 16-09, amending the future land use map from low-density residential to medium-density residential, and to rezone the LSFR to R-110E on the property at 5951 West 8502 South.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jacob and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion to the motion. I would just like to point out that the prior density would have given us an E-size, and now we are guaranteed to get the minimum home size of an E-size home. And that's a much better situation with relatively the exact same lot. So even two sizes larger than the homes to the north. So I will be supporting this motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Vote passes six to one in favor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we take a five-minute recess.
Second. Have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're recessed for five minutes only. Here you go.
I get it, man.
Sorry.
I'm Alexander Ephraim, 3735 Jud Circle. I too will repeat and approve the person just in front of me. I don't, you know, a couple of years ago, it is true, you know, politicians, they campaign. They campaign to the likes of what people want to hear. But once they're in office, wow, the doors open wide. The barn door opens wide. And I too agree. Let's keep the low density. You said you campaigned low density. Please, at least stand behind your word. Don't, you know, I'm just amazed how few people come to vote or do vote. Even as easy as the ballot coming to your home and how easy is it to make an X and whatever it is. But people are disillusioned with politicians. They say one thing and then they get into office and it's something else. I really pray this coming year that we will try to do what we say and not try to swing a different attitude and thing. And it is true. I mean, quite a few years ago, you said no high-density, but boy, it changed in Gardner Village. It just there it went. And it's just, I don't know. We all pay taxes. We're all citizens. We love West Jordan. But I don't know. We need a lot more transparency, especially what happened with the issues today that have combined. But the truth, you spoke the truth before election. Live the truth so that people will get encouraged to vote. You're representing all of us. But you don't need to go ahead and say one thing and then turn around and do something else. Anyway, I'm asking all of you to please keep your word. Remember what you said. Maybe you need to get your little flyers that you handed out to everybody and just remind yourselves, what did I say there? Oh, my goodness, I did say that. Oh, I'm not doing that. You know, I think we need to review and look into the mirror and see and say, yeah, I want to be a proud politician. I want what I said, I'm gonna do. Thank you.
Bob Jones. I live at 8327 South Maple Water Drive, which is directly north entering into this property. When we were the first residents to live in that neighborhood, the Ivory Homes, and we appreciated the fact that it was large lots and what we expected to have, that there weren't cars constantly going to be parked on the streets, both sides, as in some of the surrounding neighborhoods. And we bought there because that's what we wanted. That's what we expected. We were willing to pay a high price to get that. And I would like to see the property that's developed to the south, which connects and will be driving through our neighborhoods, to be the same thing that we expected to have when we bought
Just pass on to all the staff that I really appreciate these quarterly updates. A little quicker would be nice, but I know that we're working against some odds, so I appreciate it. Thank you. Business item eight B. Discussion on possible action regarding ordinance sixteen dash one zero regarding fifty-six hundred west, eighty-two hundred south, ratification of planning commission approval of the preliminary development plan established in density, MFR and HFR zones, the view at fifty-six hundred. LLC, you're the land company applicant. David?
Yes, Larry Gardner's here to give you an update on the latest round.
So, thank you again, council mayor. And in December, the city council remanded the preliminary development plan, density buy-ups back to the planning commission for reconsideration. Um, and on earlier this year, the planning commission took the item under consideration and went through each amenity on the density buy-ups, item by item. Spent roughly an hour and twenty minutes going through all of the items and discussing and, and really answering a lot of the questions or a lot of the concerns that were voiced in the citizens' comments about double dipping and extra, uh, extra credit for the same thing. And, and they really came to the conclusion that that was not the case. Um, at that meeting, they did however, uh, choose to remove, uh, the courtyard amenity for a reduction of ones, uh, one percent and reduce the multiple playing fields from four percent to three percent. However, the applicant, under the WSBA ordinance, had provided more amenities in the, um, trails and open space category than they really could ever be given credit for. They gave up to twenty-seven percent amenities and they're only allowed twenty-two percent. So it did not affect the overall density of the view. But again, the council did go through each item and they recommend that the city council ratify the decision of the city council, or the planning commission, excuse me. So I don't know how you want to proceed, if you have specific questions for me, if you just want to discuss it amongst yourselves.
Questions for Larry. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, Larry, I appreciate you coming back for this one again. Quick question for you, have we ever had in the performance-based zoning area, a project like this that spans two zones? I, this is the first one that I remember after.
No, and it doesn't. And, and that question came up that, well, the MFR contains a lot of amenities that will be applied to the HFR. But if you read the WSBA ordinance, it does not say that those amenities need, are zone-specific. It says they are project-specific. And so the applicant, and we, we addressed this early on under the ordinance. The applicant chose to put a lot of amenities in the medium density rather than in the high-density zone, so.
In order to meet the, meet the density requirements.
Thank you. Councilmember Hagan.
I, I really kind of wanted to know, I don't know if we wrote, I didn't write it down, but the developer talked about the economic benefit to our city. Do you know those numbers?
I don't, but I'm sure he would come back up and tell you those if you wanted to.
Would you allow, I don't know, you quote those numbers?
I don't, I think we visited this enough. I think we pretty well know everything that's changed. Other questions from Harry? Thanks. Go back to the council for a discussion or a motion. Councilmember Rice.
Hey, I hope this isn't too long-winded, but it may be. Um, some of my concerns, you've heard before, um, some you haven't. I'm going to be quoting a lot from the general plan. Um, and just for the sake of anyone listening to the audio or who's here present that doesn't know much about our general plan. Utah law requires that each city adopt a general plan to address the present and future needs of the municipality and manage growth and development of all or any part of the land within the municipality. Consistent with state law, the city of West Jordan has adopted the general plan, which is a compilation of long-range goals and policies that set the direction of how West Jordan should maintain existing development, plan for future growth, provide public services, and enhance the qualities that are unique to the city. The general plan is important, an important policy document. The plan provides direction with development, which development should take. And a primary emphasis of this general plan is on implementation, much of which is discussed in the plan, should result in a specific action or a series of actions, or are posed directly from the general plan. My first concern is with building three-story apartment buildings directly across the street from owner-occupied, low-density homes. In the general plan, chapter three, which is land use, page twenty-eight, it says that we require buffering. On, in chapter nine, which is urban design, page one twenty-seven, quote, undeveloped, open areas to the west must be carefully planned and guided to reflect the city's goals and objectives related to future growth and development, unquote. On page thirty, quote, treat building height, scale, and character as significant features of a neighborhood's image. And then again on page one forty, quote, height and scale of new development should be compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. Now, that's twice in there that they discuss height and scale of development and having it need to be, that is, that it's significant for our image, but also that it must be compat, compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. That's what they said twice, and now there's emphasis added. Um, another concern that I brought up before is piping the wash. So what's proposed is a forty-eight inch pipe in the place of a natural wash. Um, I'm very uncomfortable with that. I, I said in the past that I don't feel like that's, that's safe potentially in a flood situation. Um, there are plenty, plenty of anecdotal stories that you can hear about those things plugging up. I'm worried that that could be a potential for lawsuit. Um, and that's just an area where I just disagree with staff on that. I, I don't think that's safe. Um, in the general plan again, page one oh five, quote, West Jordan's natural drainage pathways, and in parentheses, says washes, provide important travel cover nesting, feeding, and resting habitat for deer, elk, fur, fur bearers, and birds. Wildlife tend to concentrate in natural washes and undeveloped, underlying areas. Eight natural drainage pathways transact the area traveling west to east. Open space environmental planning emphasizes connections of habitats and preservation of corridors rather than isolated patches. Encroaching land uses and increasing recreational activities can impact wildlife habitat areas. Preserving wildlife activity in their natural corridors can be accomplished by limiting the proximity of developments to the outlying perimeters of natural drainages. Consideration should be given to the boundaries of these natural drainages. The city has adopted railway standards to create both a recreational and wildlife corridor along the washes and creeks, most predominantly west of fifty-six hundred west. That's all quoted right from the general plan. On page one twenty-eight, quote, as the city develops, taking advantage of the remaining creeks, drainages, and sensitive lands and incorporating them into the emerging urban form of the west and the reestablishing that within developed areas is an important community-wide goal and vision. Now, I'll remind you, this general plan was put together by quite a bit of, of citizen input, staff input. It took years to, to, to put this together. Now with the buy-ups for developing that wash, which if we're looking at the general plan, shouldn't be developed, um, we gave fifteen percent for the trail to be built, built on top of the wash, and that's a buy-up for density. Fifteen percent for landscaping on top of the wash, and three percent for playing fields on top of the wash. I feel like we've given density for, as an incentive to pipe the wash, and I don't think that piping the wash was a good idea in the first place. And we're giving you an eight percent buy-up for landscape buffer along fifty-six hundred west, which we would require anyway. The last thing, compare what's proposed in this development plan to what was approved in the Highlands Development Master Plan. Okay? Page sixty-five on the view preliminary development plan, um, and we just got these papers that show the elevations proposed. I'd like to compare that to what was approved in the Highlands Development Master Plan for HFR and MFR. Specifically, if you just look at the MFR, what's being proposed in the medium-density zone is very, very different from what was approved in the Highlands Master Plan, which is basically why this is grandfathered in. So I'm about to pass this down so we can look at it. So I will be voting no, thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, mayor. Excuse me. The trouble I'm having with this is the straddling of the two zones. And I know I just asked Larry this question and he mentioned that it's project-specific and not zone-specific. But we're in kind of uncharted territory here because we've never had a project that straddled two zones before. So I went through the buy-ups and just put them in, put them where they belong. You know, the pool is at the medium-density zone, so I counted it there. The, uh, soccer fields are in the high-density zone, so I counted them there. Um, and, you know, there's some discretionary here and I may or may not have gotten it exactly right. But what I ended up with was a total of forty-eight percent for the medium-density zone and a total of sixty-four percent for the high-density zone. And that's going off the numbers that the developer proposed, uh, in their report, not what the staff or the planning commission has pared that down to. So I was, I was trying to be as generous as possible with the buy-ups. That would allow a density in the medium zone of forty units or forty point one two. Uh, density would be six point six seven per acre, uh, from the four point five one, which is the base density. And in the high-density, it would go from the nine point oh one base density to fourteen point seven eight, for a total of four hundred and twenty-five units. In the high-density, uh, which gives you a grand total of four hundred and sixty-five or four hundred and sixty-six, depending on how you round, uh, units instead of five hundred and thirty-one. It's not a huge difference, but I think it's, uh, I think that's where the double dipping that the council's concerned about comes into play, is that you were getting credit for the basketball court on two different sides. You were getting credit for the soccer fields on two different sides, for the pool on two different sides. So that's, um, that's the problem I have with just the overall presentation of the, of the project on the two zones. Um, if we're going to consider it all together, the overall density is fifteen point some odd units per acre as requested, and that's too much for the medium-density zone part of it. I'll just leave it at that. At this point, I don't think I can, uh, support the planning commission's density ratifications, but I, I think I've given them what I could support.
Councilmember Hagan.
Thanks, mayor. Um, you know, I addressed some of the residents out there when it comes to, I guess, our brochure when we ran for election. And one of those that I ran on was economic development. And, you know, part of that means you have to build and you have to have rooftops. Cause rooftops mean people, people mean they go spend money within your city, which generates sales tax. That's, that's a major income revenue source of the city. That's why when they talk about rooftops, that's very important. The other thing, economic development, and that's why I wanted to hear the numbers again, but, um, something like three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in property tax, that's a, that's a huge, again, revenue source that the city needs to grow. This is for our residents now too. So not just for those that are being moved in there. We need new police officer, officers, we knew, we had our retreat this last week. There's some financial decisions we have to make. And, but I'm, I'm a proponent of this because, not necessarily because I like high density, but I think this is a place for it. No one dreamed that Mountain View Court of ours five years ago, you know, and it's there now. And so I, I'm going to be a proponent of this, uh, um, motion.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, mayor. I really don't know what I'm going to say. Um, I really see both arguments on both sides. And I had a conversation with developers today and that's what I told them. I said, I'm undecided, I have not made up my decision yet. Um, the issue for me is, first of all, the, the west side planning area. Uh, I never liked it, that's why I supported getting rid of that. Um, I just, I thought we were, in my opinion, there's some good qualities to it, but it just rewarded the wrong thing in my mind. What the real answer should be, I can't tell you, but I just didn't feel like the west side planning area was it. That's why we got rid of it. That doesn't fix our situation because it's grandfathered in in this case. And as a result, we're, we're obligated to abide to its requirements. The debate is whether, a partial debate is whether the buy-ups are accurate or not. Um, I think when we go back to the planning commission, the planning commission comes back and says, seven oh vote that it, it conforms to the buy-ups and they sent it back to us twice. I think that we listen to that to some degree. It's not to say we have to, it's just a matter of, based on their seven opinions, they agree with it. I also think about the charter school, that this development, it was originally part of this, that they, uh, they sold the, for the charter school. If they had not done that, this development could be much, much more dense. And so I'm grateful to them, developers, for having done that piece. The other thing is, uh, this is a little unique. I appreciate the fact that developers come forward and is offering amenities that they are going to maintain to the public at large. I think that's phenomenal. Uh, that generally doesn't happen. It's usually, this is an HOA and stay out of here. It's our property. And in this case, there's an HOA that's going to be incorporated that will welcome its neighbors, not to all amenities, but, uh, to the major, uh, amenities, including the park core, the way I understand it. I think it's, it's unheard of. Um, I, I think it's incredible. Important to me, and has been for the six years I've been on the council, is the preservation of the core. Question is, what's preservation? I think council member Rice brought up a really good argument, um, with respect to the, the natural wash. Um, we know, we recognize as a council that there are certain parts of that, this wash, that are dangerous, and we have agreed to cover it. Um, just on the extreme side of this project. Uh, well, is this project on the extreme west side of this project? As it gets up to seventy-eight south. Um, it's on the other side of Mountain View. So we've agreed to cover it there because the, the wash at that point is really deep. But the question she brought up is wildlife, it really grabbed my attention. I know I got an email, uh, from an neighbor mentioning a wildlife piece. I remember just two years ago, there, there really is wildlife in this, in this quarter. We had a mountain lion at the elementary school. We all remember that. Um, what was that, four years ago, five years ago? Well, maybe a little longer. And to me, I love seeing the deer out there. I love seeing the foxes. It's, it's really great. And so to me, it really kind of struck, struck a chord, so. I do think that their proposal protects that quarter to some degree and that it still keeps it open. And particularly to the neighbors in Park Village, that they'll have access to it, which was really important to me. So all that rambling is to say, these are kind of the thoughts I'm thinking. I really haven't made up my mind which way I want to go on this. I just think that as we look at it, one of the issues, first and foremost for me, when I looked at something like this for setting the density, that's really what our decision is tonight, is that are we setting the density at the appropriate level? And we've got all these other little side issues, but that's what's before us, is setting the density for the slot. It's already in zone, there's nothing we can do about that. Is the zoning appropriate? So I just put that out, maybe a few others want to chime in so I can hear your thoughts as well. Thank you.
I would just comment that, uh, everyone knows I know plan of density. Um, I think we. I think we put things in place, but this is, this is an area where it's already zoned, it's grandfathered. And I believe that the developer has met the criteria based on the zone predates the current zoning law. And I agree with Councilmember Nichols, at least to the degree that we have seven members of the planning commission that we placed, appointed in those positions. Let's say they've met the criteria. So for that reason, I would probably support a positive recommendation. But it's not easy.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Based on the lack of an immediate motion, I thought I'd just take a second or two and share some of my thoughts. Councilmember Nichols shared some of those thoughts very, very well. And I share many of those. I'm kind of torn with what's been proposed, because much of it seems to fall in line with the expectations that were given to the developer. However, Councilmember Rice brought up some very, very good and salient points. I'm hesitant to support. I'm hesitant to oppose. But I think the thing I would say is, I do appreciate the developer taking a little bit of time to answer some of our concerns, because this is now the third time we've heard this. I appreciate them taking time to chat with us. I appreciate the neighbors coming out to make sure their voices have been heard and for that comment to take share with us as well. It's really not an easy position to be here and kind of decide tonight, what's the neighborhood going to look like fifty years from now? Part of me would like to take a little bit longer time to digest this a little bit further. However, at the same time, this is the third time we've heard this, and I don't want to keep pulling the neighbors and developer back again and again and again. I share these thoughts just to give those listening a little bit of the fill for what's going through our minds, at least my mind, while you're hearing some of the silence up here. I'm still having a hard time deciding which direction I'm going with this, so thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Rice.
Yeah, do you mind if I just find out what's on the screen?
Please.
Okay, the MFR is medium-density. Uh, no, that's okay. You can probably see it.
Move your microphone just a little closer to me, please.
One quick thing, if I might, not to interrupt, Councilmember Rice. Our city recorder has been good enough to add this to the agenda, so the public can go out to the website and pull this down as well. So it's available as a reference for them, too, who may be listening.
Thank you. Okay, so the bottom half of that page is showing, in the Highlands Development Master Plan, which was approved, what they thought at that point and presented to the council and to planning commission back then, what they thought that they would be putting in in medium-density zones. Okay? In the packet today, business, it's like eight-eighty-one, I think. It actually has in there a picture of their projected elevations, meaning what the front would look like on their apartment complex. So what I was pointing out earlier and passed around was this, essentially this paper, pointing out the stark difference between what we're being presented with now and what was approved then. And basically, what's being discussed now is grandfathered into that being approved. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you. Just to expound... Hello. Let's try that one more time. Just to, just to agree with what Councilmember Rice just said and what I said earlier. What I'm afraid of is it just doesn't meet the intent of the medium-density zone. It's an end run around the intent. I think you may be right. It may be the letter of the law. And certainly, under one or two specific readings of the law, it probably does. Again, laws are open to interpretation from time to time, depending on who you ask. Just like the Supreme Court, they're interpreting things all the time. They don't even agree with each other. So what I'm afraid of is the intent of the medium-density zone has not been met. And when I look at the buy-ups with that in mind, the density is just a tad too high, what the planning commission approved. The planning commission didn't discuss the two different zones separately. They discussed the project as a whole, as directed by staff, I understand. But I look at it as a medium-density zone, also in our code, was put there to be the buffer between the low-density zone and the high-density zone, is a medium-density zone. So what we're giving here is a high-density zone that bleeds over into a medium-density zone, or a high-density project. Like I said, if you consider the whole project together, it's fifteen-plus units per acre, which is more than you get in a medium-density zone. So it's a high-density project that's bleeding into a medium-density zone, and there's an end run here around that intent. And that's just the way I see it. And so when I look at it with what I think was the intent of the planning, the west-side planning area zoning, as it was put into place several years ago, and then unput into place three years ago, what I see is, is we're not quite meeting that intent. And when I look at it with that perspective, you're about ten units too many in the medium-density part of this.
Councilmember Hagan.
Since we're doing double comment, I just want to let the folks understand, you know. I understand where you are, because I moved into my home when Redwood Road was two lanes. And there was trees and it was suburbia and you could sit on our porch and see cows, you know, in the farmland. And what ended up happening now is we have a six-lane road. And not only did that happen, but we got, where we were supposed to have low-density homes, we have commercial. And part of the process that I learned from going through the same conversations you have is, did the developer do all they could to make our lives and our property more valuable? And I still think this development will only enhance the area. It'll start growing. We'll see commercial come. And, you know, again, would I want to live next to Mountain View Corridor or another Redwood Road? No, you know, but apartment people will, because all the apartments that went into Redwood Road are east of me. And, you know, we accepted that, because Redwood Road became a six-lane highway. And according to our traffic and our capital people, Fifty-Six-Hundred West is going to be a big road, a high-used road. And it might not happen tomorrow, but it's coming. But the most important thing is, we need to grow. We need the rooftops. And I'm prepared to make a motion unless there's any other objection. I move, based on the information set forth in the staff report and the doc design shown in the view at Fifty-Six Development Plan, and upon the evidence and the explanations received, today I move the city council ratify through ordinance the planning commission's approval of the view at Fifty-Six Hundred, Preliminary Development Plan located approximately eighty-two-hundred south, Fifty-Six-Hundred west, with a residential density of eight-point-five units per acre. And then MFR zone in sixteen-point-seven units acres and HFR zone, for the total of five-thirty-one multifamily units on three-thirty-four-point-eight acres and subject to the subject conditions of approval.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hagan.
I will second for discussion. If I have a motion by Councilmember Hagan and a second by Council Mayor Rolf. Discussion to the motion. Councilmembers Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a huge surprise. I'll oppose the motion with this caveat, well, not with a caveat, with this explanation. If we were voting purely on the high-density portion of this, I have no problem approving this. There is going to be high-density here. This is a, as we've stated, this is between a freeway, or will be a freeway, and a major arterial street, and a fairly busy collector's street on eighty-two-hundred, which this doesn't quite touch, but close enough. And a shopping center on the north side, eventually. That's what this is going to be. There's going to be high-density here. I'm just worried that that buffer, that medium-density buffer is not being put in place the way it's intended. And so I'll speak against the motion.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be brief this time and just try to address something I didn't discuss before, which was the buffer. It's in my mind whether the buffer is compatible or not, specifically in setting the density, if that buffer's adequate. My mind tells me that setting the density is really outside that scope. So just does the buffer fit in? And when you look at it, it's a medium-density adjacent to a low-density, which is appropriate planning. Even though it's a medium-density that we don't like anymore and it's gone away, in this case, it fits. One of the proposals I had was, well, if we just, you know, the first thought, I shouldn't say proposal. One of the thoughts I had is, well, if we move the parked cars out front, then it looks... You know, we moved, set the buildings back a little bit further, but now I realize, wait, no. Urban planning doesn't say do that now. Urban planning says put the buildings up on the street, put the parking lots in the back, so you're not looking at the cars. I'd rather look at a building and a car. And plus the cars, you have all the exhaust and everything, it just puts it further away, but put it on the back. I appreciate the developers' look at using trees significantly to try to appease the neighbors. I don't think it's perfect, but it's really, this is a hard one. And we had a similar development, I'll just throw this out, but I used this term before and I'll use it again. When you have a scenario where you feel like there's a loss on either way, sometimes that's the compromise that works. A lose-lose really can't equate into a win-win. The way I could see this, where the developer could win more, is they could always add more amenities and they could jam this up to the rim. They literally can do that with all the buy-ups. They could take this to another higher level. And they've chosen not to, and I value that. So I would, at this point anyway, unless I hear some other things that's weighing me more towards supporting the motion.
Other discussion to the motion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Mayor Rolf?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
No.
Vote fails three to four.
I need a legal opinion. If no other motion is made, I'm presuming nobody stepped up with another motion. What happens as far as time that this could be resubmitted? They have to go a year because it failed before it could be resubmitted in any other fashion?
I think on this particular item, the city council's authority is to ratify it or remand it. So I believe that at this point, it goes back to planning commission again, with the reasons that they've been given. I don't think that there's...
There's no time limit? Okay. Councilmember Jacob.
Thanks. I just had a question that dovetails with that. Could we move to approve a density that the planning commission did not forward to us? In other words, could I propose a motion to approve ten units per acre instead of forty units or whatever?
The way that the code is written, the authority is either to ratify it or remand it. But the reasoning on the remand...
Can change, right? In that case...
Councilmember Jacob. Yes, you have the floor.
In that case, I would move that we remand this one more time to the planning commission. With my apologies to the developer and the neighborhood, with the explanations that go along with the discussion this evening.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jacob.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Rice. Discussion to the motion.
Would you repeat the motion, Mayor?
Remand it back to the planning commission one more time with the discussion of the council. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Mayor Rolf?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Go pass the six to one in favor.
This is item eight-C. Discussion and possible action to rescind Resolution fifteen-dash-two-seventeen, removing the one-dollar-ninety-cent utility fee, sustainable funding for the perpetual maintenance of parks, trails, and open space. This is a motion, this is an item I brought back. I don't have to spend much time on it. The city council has seen our finances and should understand them fully. That Resolution fifteen-dash-two-seventeen would take between one to two years to get staffed. And then the same equipment would have to be purchased for the staff. I don't believe that's in the interest of our citizens, to wait that long. So with that, I will make a motion and see where it goes.
Second.
I didn't make a motion yet. And I will be following it up quickly with a second directive. I move that we rescind Resolution fifteen-dash-two-seventeen.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Rolf and a second by Councilmember Hagan. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be supporting the motion with a little bit of a twist. What I heard during the course where we had been discussing the parks fees, when we had the open houses, it seemed like a lot of residents wanted some sort of safety net around funding for parks and they wanted some sort of assurity that the money going for parks was just going to be used for that purpose. They didn't necessarily like it modeled in with the general fund. I'm very supportive of doing away with the fee. At the same time, I would like to see about going down a route to looking at the possibility of breaking out parks into a separate line item on our property tax, seeing a reduction in what's going into the general fund, offset by what's being used for the parks, to give that sort of level of comfort to the citizens who have been asking for that transparency and that protection for parks funding. and that protection for parks funding. That way, even though right now we have funding and we can take care of some of the needs, we can move a lot faster this way. In the long term, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, should there be another economic downturn, the two of them are already separated so that at that point in time, citizens can have a little bit better sense of what they want to see happen with the parks. So I, I would support this. I would also like to look at separating it on property tax going forward.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. I would be opposed to the motion only for one reason. Whether, whether it was the right thing to do or not, you know, the end of the year last year. I'm all for letting sleeping dogs lie. And sometimes we vote on the council and sometimes we don't get the vote we want. And sometimes something passes that we wish had failed and something fails that we wish had passed. And we move on. It's a, it's a democracy. The guy I voted for for president, three, four, three and a half, four years ago, didn't win. And unfortunately, I didn't get at that time, I was not, availed the opportunity to make a motion to recount or vote again. But, you know, we live with it and we move on. So sometimes I, I appreciate the intent of what's going on here and, and I would support finding funding mechanisms for the parks, however that's going to be. But in the meantime, that's what was passed by a duly-elected body of the representatives of the people. Let's let it go until we have a better idea. Chris has a good idea, or Councilmember McConaughey has a good idea. Formality. I'm new here. But if, unless that's a, an amendment to the motion, you know, if we, if, if what Councilmember McConaughey said with the property tax is an amendment to the motion, I might be able to support the motion. But just a motion to rescind, I, I, I really want to let the, what's, what's been done, let it, let it roll for a little while and see what happens.
Councilmember Hagan?
Thanks, Mayor. You know, my district council member had a meeting and we brought up this and I don't know if he's going to be talking about it, but I was intrigued with what, what he said that has everything to do with all my neighbors. And that is, I have many, many neighbors that are on fixed incomes. And a dollar ninety for you and I might not be a lot of money, but that's per month, by the way. But it is for people that are on a fixed income. And the, the idea that it's on the water bill also complicates it because if you have somebody that can't afford this extra dollar ninety, what happens to their water bill? Or what happens to their water? They turn it off. And so I think it's problematic the way that we're actually trying to get this fee. And of course, I'm going to support the motion to rescind, but I, I think you've got to remember who this is going to affect the most, and that's all my neighbors, really. And there's hundreds of them. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton?
It should not be a surprise to anybody how I feel on this since I've spoken about this a couple of times already. But I would like to discuss what a definition of a fee is. A fee in my mind is something that you have control over. If you go get your car registered, you pay a fee. If you don't pay the fee, you don't get that car registered. And if the car sits in your yard for five years, you don't pay the five years? Then you pay a fee when you go reuse it again, providing you put it in the backyard, right? Code enforcement, that would be another fee. However, a tax is something we have control over, it's something you pay regardless of whether you use the car or not, you pay that tax. If you use a pavilion at the park, you pay a fee to use the pavilion. You don't use the pavilion, you don't use it. If we don't use the parks, that fee still applies to us whether we use it or not. If we use it a lot more than somebody else, that fee doesn't change, you still have that fee. So the way that's described to me, I think that should be called a, a park tax, not a park fee. And it, and I think Councilmember Hagan explained why I don't think it should be on the electric bill, I'm sorry, the water bill. I follow that because I don't think the streetlights should be on the water bill either, and that is, so being consistent with how I felt in the past, I would be voting in favor of rescinding that.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. What I wanted to present briefly, we have, is it available like quickly? I just, I alluded this to it in the strategic planning, but it's just this document, this is, there could be a typo, it was hand-prepared, the staff did not do this for me, I just threw it together. Don't look at all the numbers below, just that first, the first three rows there. General fund, projected income, projected expenses. These are the adopted final budgets by the various councils over the years. And for me, this is where my concern was, and this is the point I was trying to make, is parks are not unique, it's just like every department we have, city administration, police and fire. The only thing that they can run on is operational money and they need ongoing annual income. They need an income source. So I just prepared this one day for myself, just to see where we were at. And this is where I made the statement that we were only in balance one year. You can see that fiscal year twelve and thirteen. That was the first year that I've seen in a while where our projected expenses that the council approved did not exceed our income. And you can see that we're on a dangerous trend based on this information. This is just the, the budget, it's not the actuals. This is really what we're saying we're going to do this year. And as a homeowner, to me, it's a dangerous trend, that we're at a deficit of four point four million. And we know we've had surpluses each year and that's through either cost savings or maybe sales tax revenues coming more than expected, turnover, there's natural savings in that. But this is that path that I'm really worried about. And so for parks, for me, and I keep in mind, when I say parks, and when we say parks and we're talking about the park fee, it has nothing to do with just parks. We're talking about our streetscapes, we're talking about snow removal on our sidewalks. That's included in this. And we were so proud of our snow removal this year, get our sidewalks, and I'm not going to, I'm not throwing you under the bus, Brian, but I kind of am. It's our fault. But our sidewalks weren't clear, our streets were, but our sidewalks weren't, because this is where it comes from. And so for me, the, the park fee is what would cover it. Now, I support the park fee for one thing, or for three things, I'm sorry. Number one, it's an immediate cash. I will dis, I'll, I'll politely say I did, uh, dis...
Disagree?
Disagree, thank you. He wants to disregard. I disagree with what the mayor said and that, that we won't see this for a while. This is funding that we implement today or we keep it in place, this, this money is immediate, the staff can plan on it, they can hire for this year. All we have to do is come up with the capital to give them the, the equipment so they can start this spring. And this would, this would be a facelift for the city. And for me, that's the number one reason, it's the timing is up. We need the money now so that they can hire the staff. Again, it's, it's, the only way we can hire staff is with ongoing income, and that's why I presented this to you, this chart here. This is our ongoing income, it's the projected income. This year it will probably go up a couple million dollars because sales tax has been on a positive trend. But the question is, can we, what else are we going to cut to make it fit? So I put that out there just for, for your comments and, and I will be going on this question.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to put forward a motion to suspend the rules to laws to continue passing nine o'clock, but I realized there's already a motion on the table, so I'm not sure.
I think we have to finish the motion before that can happen, so. Did you have a comment, or? I would just like to comment that though this is what the, the budget numbers reflect, this does not in any way reflect what has happened the last three budget cycles. Or even the last four budget cycles, but I've only been involved in the last three budget cycles. We've had to move money every year for the last three budget cycles just to stay under the maximum surplus fund balance, and it's my opinion, we'll have to do it again, even though this shows a deficit. But we're not here to, to debate our budget. We have a motion on the table, any other comments as to the motion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
No.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes four to three.
I have the direction if I can get support. Now, actually, Chris, would you extend me?
I, I will move to suspend the rules to laws to continue to be on that.
I'll say. Motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion, seeing none. Do we need a rule call on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we will move forward. I propose that the city council direct staff to move four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars by April fifteenth of this year from the surplus fund balance. And two hundred thousand from the fleet for equipment to staff the individuals, the employees by April fifteenth. And add one quarter of that budget, one quarter budget to the budget for sixteen seventeen, because it will be funded until April. And bring forth the budget the following year to balance with this. And this is just direction to staff because we don't have agendas. But I want to get moving on parks. Councilmember Hagan?
Yeah, I, I would agree with this because I, you know, studying the revenues that we have coming in now, I see us having a surplus fund, fund balance, and I think we'll be able to fund even what he's, what the mayor's projecting this way, but I think it'll also, we can decide on our next year's budget and make it a sustainable amount for, for what's proposed. So I would, I, I'd agree with the mayor to direct staff.
What do you want to do? Councilmember Nichols?
I, I mean, I like the direction that we want to take care of it, I just question whether it can be done. We talked in our strategic planning session about hiring officers and, and all this, and I just want to, I just have doubts that we're going to find enough income to offset the ongoing expenses. That's my question, but I, I, I'm supportive of this, leaning this direction, see if we can do it. I just don't know if in the end we can get there.
If we don't, I'll be the first to support you in a three dollar and eighty cent park fee. I'm that confident that will be enough to fund the police, fund the parks, and fund bond payments for the things that we approved during strategic plan. So I will join you, not for a dollar ninety, because that doesn't get Brian where he needs to be. I will join you if we don't in approving a three dollar and eighty cent park fee.
So my, yeah, my, I didn't want to say anything without you addressing me, but the only follow-up I'd say to that is if I had to word by this budget cycle, not the end of this budget cycle that's coming up, I'm, I'm on board with that. Because what I, for two and a half years, we've been saying, yeah, we're going to take care of this year and then we get there. The only thing we've done is we've given them capital. We haven't given them maintenance money. That's where we're hurting, that's where the, the city is looking bad, is, is what we're seeing out there.
Well, that's why...
And so I, and it's just for me, I just, yeah, as long as it's right now, I'm...
That's what I want, an immediate, and then if, if we find it's a shortfall, like it's been predicted by the finance department, then I agree. Anytime we have a shortfall, but the pattern doesn't show that we're going to be shortfall this budget cycle or the next. Councilmember McConaughey, oh, sorry. Did you have one, Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. The, the only hangup that I'm having is, is, as has been brought up by Councilmember Nichols, is, is trying to fund an ongoing expense with what it looks like the trends are now. I, I just have concerns with that. I don't think in two thousand seven, anybody saw two thousand eight coming. And so I, I get a little nervous about saying, well, it looks like we're going to have a lot more money than what the budget says. I, I agree, finance is conservative in, in their expenses and, and, and conservative in the projected revenues, and so we have in the last few years ended up with more than what the budget said we would end up with. And I, I understand that. But again, in two thousand seven, I remember talking with a, a family member of mine, and that was when gas was getting higher and higher and higher, it was reaching three dollars and three fifty and three eighty and four dollars. And I said, I don't know if the economy can sustain this. He said, ah, we have the most robust economy in the world, this is not going to affect us. And a year later, everything was, well, it affected us. So I just get a little nervous, there's some signs in the economy, now I'm not an economist, but I did stay on the Holiday Inn Express last night. There are some signs in the economy that, that show a little bit of a weakening, a little bit of a slowing, that just makes me a little nervous to plan on revenues that aren't on the books.
And I agree with you, if we hadn't had the history and it's not minding up like that, well, I don't believe in taxing forward, so that's why I don't support the ta, the fee. And I'm going to give my word that I'll support, because I believe that Brian needs the help and I believe that our roadscapes need the help. I believe that our parks need a little help. We've dumped a ton of money into parks, also I think they need a little help. But I also believe that we have a rapidly expanding budget. I'm confident that, and, and if you recall, we had a discussion and there was only, I believe, two dissenters in bringing the surplus fund balance from twenty-five percent back into the twenty percent range. And part of this would be attributable to that, all these things that we've talked about. So. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, it's really nice to kind of see us all going down the same direction and I, I don't even want to say arguing, but more discussing the best route to get there. It's really refreshing change, so I'm, I'm really...
I agree with you, by the way.
It's, it's a very nice to see that we're all trying to go the same route. Back to the comment that I made earlier, I'm wondering if there is general support from the council to direct staff into looking at what it would take to break out parks as a separate line item on the property tax bill so that should something happen ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, we have a different, we have different safeguards to ensure that we don't end up in the place that we've been at the last few years.
So you're talking about creating an enterprise fund for parks?
No.
Or just a separate line, uh...
A separate line item on our property tax, that would be for parks recreation and open space. I don't know if this would mean, I don't know if it's something that we could just do right on our own, or if we would need to create like a special service district, because I know we have part of our city that pays into, is it the Kearns Recreation District or something like that? So I don't know if we'd have to create a special assessment area that covers the majority of the city and then do something like that, but is there interest from the majority of council to look into having staff pursue something like that to be the safeguards in the future?
I'm, I'm totally okay with that.
I think that's a great idea, providing it doesn't include any increase in tax, it just keeps the same number, the same, there'd be severe mark down.
First part is figuring out what, what we would need to do, the second part would be allocating it. Ideally, what I'd like to see simplistic as could be decreasing the general fund, what's going from property tax into the general fund, and increasing to what's going into the, the park fee to offset. That said, I know there's all sorts of other variables that I haven't accounted for, like with it being in the general fund, right now there's a fair amount of property or sales tax that's helping fund it. I don't know if by having it separate, we would shoot ourselves in the foot and not be able to collect that funding, I don't want to see that happen. However, with the fee, we don't have businesses that are going to be paying into the, or, never mind all the law on the fee thing, the fee's dead. Anyway, I, I don't know what all the ramifications of that thought process are, so it looks like everyone's on board.
I just want to make sure that everyone will move this money now and we can get Brian exactly what he needs to get staffed up by April fifteenth and equipment up. Then I would support a lot better that than the fee schedule that's been talked about. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
I don't have the history that you do, but I do have a budget that's planned to run into the deficit of, by the tune of five million dollars. I would hope that we would run into a positive, but right now, it's planned to not do that. So I would have difficulty hiring people based on a one-time infusion of money.
So I would have difficulty hiring people based on a one-time infusion of money. And it's just what, you know, Councilman Jetha indicated, yeah, I just have a high uncomfort level with it.
I know you have, and I, I understand where you're coming from, but, uh, you haven't been here for the last four budget cycles, and we won't know if I'm right or, uh, finance is right until another six months. And I still believe that the entire, the majority of the council wants to reduce the surplus fund balance from twenty-five down close to twenty, not exactly twenty, but close to twenty, so. By doing that, uh, I think we're in balance. We're balanced. Does any, okay, we just need to drink. Oh, yeah, Brian, please.
Mayor, I just, I just want to be clear on, on, on the park strips. The park strips have been brought up several times tonight. Currently, the park strips are contracted out. It's getting, we're preparing to, we, we're at the timeframe where we have to rebid. Um, right now, the contract's roughly a hundred and, it's over a hundred thousand dollars. It's probably going to double, um, because we're picking the, in the scope of work to do a weekly maintenance instead of a bi-weekly. But depending on what happens, I mean, eventually, we want to bring that back in house, the funding.
Well, that's what I, isn't that what you described to the council that you wanted, uh, as part of this, to bring it back in house?
Yes, but right now, it's, it's contracted out.
Until June, or when?
Until June, yes, June thirtieth, the contract expires. But if we continue to go down that road because we don't have the staffing, it's, it's going to increase.
Well, um, if we have the support of this direct staff to bring us back something that's, we can approve, ratify officially, is that okay with everyone? I, hey.
Will it include the, looking at the property tax?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll bring that back as well.
Because I would like to see a combination of both a shot in the arm and with the property tax options.
Okay, is that clear, Mr.?
Mayor.
Yes.
So in the initial part of that, you talked about using fund balance from the general fund to move. To do that, you're going to ne- need to have a public hearing to increase the budget in the general fund.
We'll have to have, I want a little hack each brought back so we can ratify it. We'll hold a public hearing. The public could be tickled when I raise a fee. You had a final comment?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to be really quick. We just had some, uh, consent calendar items tonight, again, keep coming up. I was wondering if the council has any interest in administratively allowing staff to take care of alcohol license requests?
Absolutely.
I was planning on bringing that up as well.
So.
If it, if we can, we probably need to do a municipal code change, I'm guessing, but I just wanted to.
I would think so. I, I would have, uh, as long as it's on, on the same buildings, the same things, uh, the arena and the Pioneer Hall. Yeah, as long as it's outside, not, um, city functions.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so like tonight, we had alcohol license requests in Pioneer Hall, they keep coming up for council approval, and the reason that is, is because it used to be against city code to have alcohol in city venues. And so it was changed four years ago, five years ago, I think we changed it, but it was put so the council had to approve each incident just to make sure we were following it, uh, that they were in line and that they weren't getting out of hand. Historically, I think it's demonstrated that it's working effectively, so we were wanting the city staff to administratively take care of that, not bring it back to the council for approval each time.
So we can just make that pending first, and then bring it back and, and modify.
I think it's a code change, because I think the code says it has to come back to us, I think. And if it's not, then just do it, if it's just a policy thing, but if it requires a code change, bring it back to us. Um, I have a few other issues I can bring up, another thing, just one last comment is that, just a reminder to the council that I really take your, um, the recommendation of the council in the past, when they recommended me to the governor for the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District, I feel terrible every time I walk out of that meeting early. Just a reminder that it's the, it's the second two, or second Wednesday, it's the same first council meeting we have every month. If we can shorten closed sessions or not have closed sessions, those days would be so helpful, uh, especially as we come up to budget season. It's, it's that, it's that second Wednesday each month, which is our first council meeting, and they start at three, but they generally go till six. And so every time I have a closed session, I'm always leaving that meeting early, and I really take it seriously, and I'd like to represent West Jordan effectively, so. You know, I just, it's whenever you can, I just, like today, it was not a big deal, but next, the council meeting would be.
Hopefully it won't have to, thank you. Yes, Councilmember McConaughey.
I would propose then that if for some reason we do need a closed session on that day, we do it after the meeting instead of before, and then just kind of plan on, plan on that.
We can do that. Okay. Who do you hear?
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.